We will get started here. If you plan on speaking tonight, please go ahead and sign in, and we will get you sworn in shortly. Even if you're just thinking about speaking, go ahead and sign in. It makes things easier than having to get sworn in at the last minute here. As soon as Mr. Price gets signed in, we will get underway here.
Well, it's not even good in the week here.
That's right. I want to thank the fiscal court for getting our clock back in here, what we're doing, what time we are. All right, this is the January 2025 meeting of the Georgetown Scott County Planning Commission. Hope everyone has looked over invoices from last month. I'll take a motion to approve the December invoices. I have a motion. Mister Smith, all in favor, say aye. Approval of the minutes for December 12. Are there any changes or additions to the minutes there? I'll take a motion to approve those. All right, Mr. Stone, second. All in favor, say aye. Approval of the January agenda for this. No changes. Thank you, ma'am. Motion by Ms. Singer and second by Mister Smith, all in favor, say aye. Items for postponement or withdrawal have none other than what's shown on the agenda. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. Also, can you adjust your mic so it's facing your...
Yes, ma'am. Does it matter?
Yeah, just better make sure your mic's on.
Make sure your mics are on.
Yeah, don't take them besides uh, item P under old business.
Right.
Excuse me, Chairman Niffle?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I suggest that the approval of these revisions to the definitions be postponed because there is no original text with which provided to you or to the public with which, 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 with which we can compare the red, the new red test.
Gotcha. All right, we, we'll get to that when we get down to that. Thank you, Mr. Price. We talked about that at the workshop on, on Monday, on Tuesday there, so that was our intent anyway. That was our intent anyway, so we'll get to that in, in due process. Thank you. Items eligible for consent. We have three items, the Allen property, the Leverton property, and worldwide equipment that are each eligible for consent, and so we will address each of those before we get into the old business. The first item is FSP 2024-65, the Allen property, a final subdivision plat to divide one 10.83 acre parcel into two tracts measuring 5.83 acres and a five acre plot with no remainder located at 327 double culvert road. Is there anyone here that is opposed to that division or would like to hear it? Seeing none, I will take a motion for approval for the Allen property.
I'll make a motion for approval of FSP 2024-65.
I'll second. I have a motion by Ms. Singer. A second by Mister Smith. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mister Jesse?
Yes.
Mister Vest?
Yes.
Mister Stone?
Yes.
Mister Garrett?
Yes.
Mister Green?
Yes.
Mister Smith?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So for representative for that, we'll come see Mister Perkins. While he's doing that, let me just tell you a story about the Allen family. I coached girls softball for a number of years, and Robin Allen was my assistant coach. Her daughter, Brandy, played for me, and the first year she played, she was scared to death that she would strike out. She came up to the plate, stood there, and took strikes and struck out, but was afraid to swing the bat because she was afraid to, and would come back to the dugout crying her eyes out every time, but wouldn't swing the bat.
I'm sure she's excited about you telling her.
Oh, just, but...
Maybe the news graphic can...
But a couple of years later, she developed into quite the softball player, and she's, she swung the bat, but she swung late, and she would grill them right down the first baseline, and I bet she had one of the highest on-base percentages of anybody in that league.
Is that Will and Robin Allen still there?
Yeah.
I know Will, and I know, well, I know Robin too for being on the far right corner.
And Brandy. She was a sweetheart.
So the point of that is, your hitting classes are going to start in spring, right?
That's right. Okay. The next item is the FSP 2024-66, the Leverton property. Is there anyone here that is opposed to that property or would like to hear it? All right, I will take a motion to approve that.
I make a motion, Charlie, approve SP-2024-66.
Second.
I went to school with Mike Leverton. I could tell some, I could, I could tell some stories there, so.
Brad and I could tell some stories about his son, but we'll refrain.
Story for another day.
All right, I have a motion by Mister Jesse and a second by Mister Green. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mister Jesse?
Yes.
Mister Vest?
Yes.
Mister Stone?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Mister Green?
Yes.
Mister Smith?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, Chris, if you'd come over here and see Mister Perkins, you all signed up and signed out. So, Chris, did you go, did you graduate with my daughter, Lee, or Meredith?
Neither one. He was in between.
Was in between?
Graduated with Brad and I.
Okay.
Older than Meredith, younger than Lee.
Yeah. All right, the third item is PDP 2024-67, worldwide equipment. Is there anyone that is opposed to that or needs to hear it? All right. Hearing none, I will take a motion for approval for worldwide equipment.
I'll make a motion to approve PDP 2024-67.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion by Mister Garrett, a second by Mister Jesse. Mister Jesse?
Yes.
Mister Vest?
Yes.
Mister Stone?
Yes.
Mister Garrett?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Mister Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right. That gets all the consent items out of the way, and we will go back to old business, PSP 2024-43. Before we get, yeah, just, just one second, Steve. Before we get going, Charlie, could you swear everyone in?
Yes, sir. If everyone signs in to speak, if you stand, raise your right hand, please. You swear affirm to sanctity to God tonight to be the crucible, the best of your information and belief.
Yes.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Maybe I was getting old, but I look at this, this agenda here, and I see item D of under, what we did for free, you did with game farm properties.
Yes, sir.
Did you all just move on that? Did you all?
No, hadn't even discussed it yet.
So you're coming to it, right?
Yes, right.
Well, thank you.
You're, you're not getting old. You just came here. You're not getting old. You just came here.
May I be true? Thank you.
All right, we're coming to Cherry Blossom Village.
Uh, thank you. I do just want to identify one thing before I really get started. So this has been filed as phase 11. There is no phase 10, so they are in effect going to, through this kind of, adjust it to actually get the number order and not forget the number 10. So in the conditions of approval sheet and on the presentation, I'll be referring to it as 10. It is 11 in the staff packet, so just for clarification of the record, it was just a misnumbering, so.
So it's phase 10, but track 11?
Uh, yes. Yes, I'm getting a nod from premier.
Good enough. Thank you.
So, very confusing, a lot of numbers. Anyway, this is a preliminary subdivision plat for 52 single-family lots, five open space lots, and construction of a new public street at the ends of and connecting Kingston Drive and Sunningdale Drive in the Cherry Blossom Village subdivision. The site acreage is 22.1 acres and is zoned R1C PUD. It's part of the larger property that was rezoned in the 90s, in the late, late 90s. In early 2000s, has been developed over time as the demand has dictated it and the golf course is filled out. They do propose those 52 lots at a density of 2.3 units an acre, and they do propose, the nearest connection would be a connection of Oxford Road, and then through the neighborhood, you can get to Oxford Drive and Cherry Blossom Way, and they've requesting continued use of their variances approved as part of their PUD in 99, 2000, which are to the front and side yard setbacks. So this is an aerial, aerial map here of the zoning, just to generally kind of understand what we're looking at. The kind of more bright yellow color is our R2 zone, and that would be the Cherry Blossoms Townhome Development. The similarly colored peach area is the previous phases of Cherry Blossom Village, Village at Lanes Run, Pleasant Valley, and then as you go kind of to the bottom, you're looking at that pink and that kind of textured pink coloring, and that's all of the business activity at Cherry Blossom and Connector Road. This is a general area here. You can see the current layout of the golf course, the current layout of all the existing residential streets and houses in the neighborhood, and then you can see in red, which I've zoomed in here, the actual location where this phase is located. Their intent right now is to connect from Sunningdale, which is the northern or the top of the screen, along the shape of the property to Kingston, and then have a connection made from Kingston to Old Oxford Road at the intersection, or across from the intersection of Limestone Lane and Old Oxford Road. They are proposing that the, or they are requesting, or proposing, that the access to Kingston be gated up until a point that Lexus Way is, or whatever, would, the, the connection there would be made, just to kind of discourage that cut-through traffic, given that Kingston Drive is a pretty straight shot through the neighborhood to get to the clubhouse where the main activity is, and then to get to the road, the roads around it, so Cherry Blossom Way and Oxford Drive, and that the intersection of, or as you go along Sunningdale, that that would not be a gated entrance because that's more winding and has more natural traffic calming components to it. We personally prefer, if you're going to be a public road, that it be publicly accessible, but we are generally understanding that we are still getting that public road connection. I bet it is a more winding connection for those neighbors, and that the neighborhood and city official vehicles and other vehicles would be able to get in as needed with codes or key fobs or anything like that. I can, I'll defer any kind of questions about the gate logistics to the applicant, but to our understanding, that's kind of what they intend to do with this plan. There are several lots which are kind of hard to see with my little star sight put up, but along this kind of blue line here, that is the FEMA flood plain, and there are some improvements to Old Oxford Road that would be made as part of this development, some widening and kind of improve, yeah, widening improvements and other connections, and those may impact the flood plain, so they would be submitting a study of the flood plain after those improvements would be made to determine whether or not those lots would be buildable whenever that improvement was made. Furthermore, there are several lots along the north side that are potential carst activity areas or low spots that need to be investigated prior to getting a building and permit issued to them by the Building Inspection Office. Of course, those all kind of rely on that road being built first, connecting Sunningdale to Kingston, but at some point, whenever that came to be, they would need to get those studied before any home could come in on that property. They are requesting the continuance of their variances that were previously approved. So do the setbacks to five and, to seven and a half feet on the, on each side and to 25 feet on the front. This would be consistent with their previously approved ones, and we just always like to bring these up, that these were previously approved, and staff does recommend that they would be continued to be approved as part of this. Final comments would be mostly pertaining to stormwater management. It's on a joint system, so they just need to work to integrate this developed area into the previous areas, and they have a lot of green ways to kind of absorb a lot of that, that runoff change and everything like that. Ultimately, staff recommends in favor of the preliminary subdivision plat for Cherry Blossom Village Phase, actually 10, with the two variants that have been previously approved that would just be carried through, and, what do you call it, 11 conditions of approval. The first five are on this page, just our general ones. The next six through 11 are on the following page. Calling to question specifically, the connection to Old Oxford Road be made as part of this phase of development and in agreement and in accordance with all of the improvements that we require, and they be made prior to the recording in the final subdivision plat, and also that connection be made as well. Besides all that, though, that's, that's all I really have. Yes.
So Kingston Drive is a public street. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So they want us to approve having a gate on a public street? Is that, am I understanding that right?
Um, that is correct, yes.
And we, we don't normally do that on a public street. Is that correct?
Uh, it has been previously approved off of Oak Hill Lane, which is, you can kind of barely see it in this one here, but there's a connection across from Abbey Road right now, and that gate is gated at this time. They do have a note on the final plat, or on the plat that was submitted, that it would be, I believe, and you'll have to correct me on the language, Jason and Rory, but I believe it would be ungated or removed at the point that the connection, the east-west connection between Cherry Blossom and Old Oxford Road were, was completed.
And Abbey Road is gated as part of what subdivision?
Uh, I don't know exactly their name. It's an older five-acre lot subdivision in the county. It's a county-maintained road. I think it's just Oxford Manor, maybe.
It's not a city road?
No. It is publicly maintained, but it's just, on one side of the county, on one side of the road is the county maintenance, and on the other side is the city maintenance.
Not the city of Georgetown, though?
Not the city of Georgetown.
Thank you.
So Kingston is the main road running from the red corner there?
No, doesn't, give me one second. We'll get the pointer, and I'll be able to kind of gesture a little bit easier than just jumping and pointing and hoping that I hit the spot. He's, he's getting it. Don't worry. He got it, hopefully. So Kingston, um, as it stands, is this north-south connector piece here?
Right.
Relatively straight, and they're proposing an extension of Kingston to Limestone here, and then Sunningdale to kind of loop around, follow in the shape of the property to get to this, to get to an intersection here before connecting Oxford.
And, and so going north, Kingston runs on up past the clubhouse, and then to the road, to the main entrance to Cherry Blossom? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And so they're just wanting to keep people from cutting through while this is under construction?
Up and...
We'll get the, we'll let them answer that.
Yes, I thought that would be a more appropriate question to ask of them. To our understanding, it is until the east-west connector is in this general vicinity to the north.
There are many areas in Georgetown that have had subdivisions where the people would like to have gates to do the same thing that has not been allowed to happen, so.
Not been allowed, what's not been allowed to happen?
To have gates on public streets.
People, subdivisions are built and then built around them, and people cut through the subdivision.
Yeah. They can more speak to the situation on the gates.
Right.
And their intentions of that one, but...
Any other questions for Elise from the staff?
Thank you.
All right, we'll hear from the developer and maybe get some of these questions then.
Aurora Kaylee, here on behalf of the Cherry Blossom Golf Course. I have Jason Sekon with me here as well, ownership, if you have any questions directly for him. Yes, the gate we're asking for is requested to be temporary. The, as you notice, it is a straight shot and does go right in front of the clubhouse, which is typically where you're going to have most of your slower activities as far as people coming and going with the golf carts, getting out to the courses. To the right of the drawing there, there's been a lot of new home construction going up, and we feel that this connection, if they're allowed to go through a straight shot right in front of the clubhouse, it just produces too high of speeds. We, we, we understand the Lexus Way extension will be coming. It'll be a much larger road. It will connect to Old Oxford, running a straight shot over Champion Way, and at that time, you know, we don't believe that the neighbors or the area, that it will become such a cut-through for so many people, and they have a better option to get to a major road with lights and, you know, correct speed. This plan we brought in, I guess, a year ago, and in the past year, that's, this is the item. It was that connection and the timing to Old Oxford that we've been working with staff on. I think originally, we showed you one connection at a different location, but it being Kingston Drive is the one that's always sort of been planned, the overall master plan. That's the one that staff wanted to see connected through, and quite frankly, that was, master plan's old. It was before there was so much other traffic in the area. So we expect this last section here, single-family homes on the golf course, a couple of phases. It shouldn't take too long to get all the connections through there, connection using Sunningdale. We'll get vehicles through. It just won't be quite so advantageous for the person to come speeding through there and use it as a shortcut over to Oxford and Cherry Blossom.
Any questions for Aurora? I understand the concept here. You get up around the clubhouse. It's got a junky little turn in there, and then kind of bottleneck's going across that bridge, and I understand the reasoning for it, and I also understand that the Cherry Blossom, or the Lexus Way is on the city and county's agenda to get done, but in reality, we don't know when that's going to be done. And we could approve this gate right now, thinking that in the next 18 months, Lexus Way would be opened up and it'd be a moot point, but we don't know that, unfortunately. What, what folks do you think will be using that as a cut-through? To alleviate what?
The inter, uh, Connector Road intersection.
With what? With Old Oxford?
With, with coming in, yeah, the traffic on up the drawing, coming down Old Oxford, and to the right of it, that connection through now goes through several of the new neighborhoods that are building up quite quickly, and, you know, the homes are still being constructed. So anything we can do to deter that from coming through this golf course area and having them use the other routes until the correct roads are built, will, I believe, will help us. A few months ago, we were here with the townhome portion of Cherry Blossom, and in that one, again, we agreed to make the connection to Old Oxford as the first phase we were going to do. That one was able to have, there's probably three turns in there, so it's, you can get through, but you're not going to, you know, gravitate to running towards that neighborhood trying to get over. With this one and the other road systems that we were looking at originally, we were trying to stay away from that straight shot, which is the Kingston Drive. So, you know, we, we've provided, we will be providing alternative routes. We're just trying to keep it from being the most easily accessible to people cutting through and trying to, you know, when you get a straight shot, you're going to go fast.
Would speed bumps be a deterrent at all? You're worried about high speed going through there, or even a deterrent from people using it as a cut-through?
Um, not nearly as much as...
No, obviously not as much.
The circuitous route, right. Um, I don't know.
I can understand the safety risk with speed coming through their golf carts.
Right, and I, and I'm not really sure what Georgetown stance is. Other communities, we've had trouble putting those in because of snow plows. They, the roads department has basically told us, stop doing that. We don't want to pop them out with our plows. I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what it is up here.
Charlie, I can remember when this issue came up with Old Armstrong and Hillside Drive and Indian Hills and Indian Acres and Bradford and so on, so on, that they were going to try to see if you could prevent people from driving through all these areas.
Uh-huh.
And that wasn't done, so I don't know.
Did you see what I was saying? That, right around the clubhouse there, it's, it's kind of funky and...
Yeah, to me, not wanting as a cut-through is one thing, a safety risk is another, right?
Yeah, yeah.
If I may share, so...
Yes, sir.
Jason Sekon, just from our experience when we opened it up, when we did phase nine, which is up there on the kind of northern part of the map, the other connection they were talking about where there's a gate currently, it took us a few months because of the supply chain delays at the time to get that gate up, and in that time, people were using it as cut-through. I myself almost got hit by a car once. One of our contractors also almost got hit by a car once, and in that time, just when we had that open, we have a lot of mailboxes that are those brick mailboxes near the road. Two of them got taken out by vehicles going off the road and hitting them, and that never happens otherwise. So for, I, I also spent one day where I just parked out by there for a couple hours, and in my car, and every car that came by coming in, I followed it to see where it went, and about half of them went to the neighborhood, and about half of them were going through. So for me, it's one where, you know, even when that's a more winding circuitous route compared to this straight shot, that's what I'm really worried about. compared to this straight shot, that's what I'm really worried about is until we have that Lexus Way connection up there, which, you know, we're, we're happy and willing to partner with the city on getting that done. We own the land up there for a big chunk of that as well. We're happy to work with the city on that. That's always been part of the long-term vision. We also, over on the townhouse side, gave some easement land to allow a road back there, but I think ultimately that's been 86th at this point, and now the Magnolia connection's being used instead and the redo on Connector Road as well. I think that'll help as well. So I think we've kind of got those kind of main traffic thoroughfare north-south bypasses around the community to prevent cut-through, but until Lexus Way is established, we're really worried about that straight shot cut-through. We did think about, you know, could we do some traffic calming on that as well along Kingston, and the problem with Kingston is it's a wider street compared to Sunningdale. It's 10 feet wider, and it's also just a very straight shot with just a few undulating hills, and then you can't really quite see it on there, but down at the bottom where it kind of turns, getting up near the clubhouse, it goes down, so cars are often gaining speed, and we've got a golf cart crossing path right there from hole number nine back to the clubhouse for people to do the turn in the, in the bit there. So that's, it, it's one of those where just from the experience with having no gate on Oak Hill at the initial point, I, it, you know, we're happy to have this be a path through once that Lexus Way connection is there, and we're happy to work with the city on getting Lexus Way connected. It's just, it's, it's too worrisome for me right now, even with some traffic calming measures.
Did I hear you say you followed people on a public road to see where they're going through your subdivision? Is that what you just said?
For about two hours, I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Therein lies my problem with all this. These are public streets. In regards to where public streets are, people want to drive through them? In the city of Georgetown, they should be allowed to.
I, I completely understand that and appreciate that. It's, for me, this is more of a safety issue on, on this until we have Lexus Way. Once we have Lexus Way, gate being open, or if you want us to pull down the gate completely, happy to do that for having the gate there, happy to have access for residents and city vehicles, school buses, service vehicles, GMWSS, dump, garbage truck, things like that, we're unhappy for that. I'm just really worried about people trying to just get from point A to point B as fast as possible and jamming through this neighborhood.
Or you could just wait till they do Lexus Way and develop that.
That's correct. They could.
We could. The unfortunate thing is, basically, our development keeps the golf course open, so we need to keep developing this to keep paying for the golf course, to keep it as, you know, a good valuable piece of real estate in Georgetown.
Well, there are subdivisions in Georgetown right in the middle of town that have no sidewalks, have all kinds of traffic passing through them, and no special accommodations have been made for any of them, and they are not safe either. Just got to treat everybody the same regardless of what subdivision it is.
But you also have to make decisions that are, I mean, you don't want to make a decision on one case and then 20 years later, make a decision that also puts safety at risk, so.
Well, you can make adjustments to that road to make it safer. I mean, they don't want to put speed bumps all the way across there, but you can.
I don't know if you can or not from...
Sure you can. There's not, no problem. You cannot put speed bumps.
Please don't interrupt me.
Well, let me finish.
I think you had finished. I don't know if they can put speed bumps there or not from a snow removal standpoint. I don't know. Maybe the staff can tell us.
Staff is unaware of the speed course on the old side of the road.
Okay, sorry.
No, we just cannot make, it, it's just not right, and to the taxpayers of the city of Georgetown that pay for city roads, not to have access in and out of all roads in the city of Georgetown, it's as simple as that, regardless whether it's Indian Hills or one of the tree streets or Cherry Blossom, or don't have them as public roads.
So if we were to approve this with the gate in place, and then Lexus Way opens up and you take the gate down, I mean, what's to keep the subdivision across Limestone there, Oxford Landing, is that?
Village, or Village at Lanes Road.
That's Oxford Landing.
Oh, Oxford, yes.
Oxford Landing, yeah. People from cutting right through there anyway, you know, after it's over, after they open up Lexus Way.
Right.
Still may have people cutting through.
I, I, I think that's, that's, I mean, people will find whatever route they want to get from point A to point B.
Right.
Right? So I agree with that. However, I do think that it won't be quite the volume that it will be right now without, with Lexus Way absent, and especially with Connector Road, those improvements not yet done and built. I mean, in terms of like, you know, actually moving dirt and doing something on this, I mean, we're very far away because we'll have our hands full with the townhouses first, right? So this isn't a connection that even, you know, we approved today. We're not going to have this road up and built within a year, right? It's going to be further out. So that's one where if, when we get to that point where Lexus Way is built and we have this and we have it open, I would also like to do more traffic calming, like for example, on Clubhouse Drive, when you first come in off of Cherry Blossom Way, that area, we have a lot of island medians with landscaping and things like that that the homeowners association maintains. I'd like to do something similar here as well, and I think that'll help kind of narrow the street a little bit more and give more visual appeal for the neighborhood as well, so it'll help kind of reduce that. We're likely, once that's open, we're going to have to do a speed table or something like that where the golf cart crossing path is, because there's a golf cart crossing paths right there from the end of hole number two to the beginning of hole number three as well. So I'm confident that at that stage, we'll need to do more of that, and I'm fully supportive of that. I just feel like, right now, absent Lexus Way, I, I worry that that's not going to be enough to help slow down and calm things down, just from the experience that we had with the access point being there on Oak Hill.
Is most of the traffic, I mean, I don't know if you know where it originated from, but I'm assuming from the plant between shifts?
I, I don't know where it was coming from. I just know that I, I basically, at the end of Oak Hill where Old Oxford is, I was at the end of the street there with my car, and just every time a car came through, I just followed to see where.
Coming from Old Oxford into the...
Into the neighborhood, yep.
So it's not, it shift changed, you'd be going to work, not coming away.
Right, but still shift change, like between shifts. I just know, working at Toyota for many years, that was, Cherry Blossom Connector Road was a huge cut-through for people late to work, whatever. The case might be trying to cut off some time. Having experienced it personally, I know what an issue it was.
Staff, can we look at approving this development with, because they said that it's going to leave sometime before the road even goes in, can we approve the development itself without approving a street or road plan?
I would be hesitant to take that action, just given the conversation the planning commission had. The staff are not comfortable making an administrative determination for something like that, and so we just need to come back to you for final determination.
Thank you.
Can I, can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
The connection, so there is a timing thing. The city is not going to take over responsibility for maintenance of that until they build the street, put in so many houses. They have a maximum of three years, so they're, build all the sidewalk and everything gets done. What happened on Phase Nine, the condition on the plat, and I don't have the wording in front of me, was that it be evaluated. The city does not have to accept responsibility if there's a gate there. The city has to make that final determination. They could set the precedent if they wanted, or they could ask for the gate to be taken down, or they could come to an agreement with the HOA. So it is going to be, there is going to be a time lag in there, so if they don't start for a couple of years, this is probably a decision five years down the road as well, so just...
Till there's a gate there, it might end up not being a public road, which makes the...
It could. I mean, the city could totally reject that from, from accepting it with the gate there, as they have in other situations. They've rejected...
I just remember when Old Armstrong was built in different phases. There was a big argument about that final section when people would use that shortcut from Page Depot Road all the way through George, all the way through there to get to 25 and Broadway. So this is all came up before, and these accommodations were never made or considered.
My neighbor would love to have Oxford Village Lane and have a gate down there.
I'm sure they would.
She is, she's mentioned it 100 times, and we're like, you can't do it. It's a public road.
But in this case, it's not a public road yet.
Not yet.
And the city can decide not to make it a public road, right?
That's exactly what he just told us.
Yeah, so...
They could decide not to accept it as a, yes, leave it, or they could ask for the gate to be removed at that time.
But, but we all know that, that they're wanting this all to be public roads.
They might want it to be, but the city has the option to say no.
Yeah.
But that's every subdivision moving forward. So is every subdivision going to ask for a gate, and then we're going to say yes, and then it's up to the city whether or not that, that gate has to come down? Is that how we're going to do it?
Other subdivisions that this city refused to make public roads, Gatewood is one. Not because of a gate, but because of size of the street.
But that's not the situation here.
No, it's not, but...
I, I just think this sits up as Georgetown is growing so quickly, so rapidly, and subdivision's being put up everywhere and making these huge exceptions on public streets. I just don't think it's...
You're not making an exception on a public street, but it's not a public street.
It's going to be a public street.
But if it's a time it becomes a public street, then the gate will come down.
Yeah.
Yeah, well...
What, I mean, what about the...
So we're going to make them do all this stuff on Old Oxford Road for a private road. Just make sure that, right, what you're saying, so this will be a private road, but they've got to put in a lot of other things on Old Oxford, right? Turnaround lanes and things?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is a benefit to the community as a whole, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Do, do we need to get an opinion from the city engineer, what is acceptable and what they would prefer?
I just don't see why we have to do this, period. I mean, these...
Well, we, we need to get it right. We, we don't need to carte blanche, accept everything that comes before us, but we don't want to deny things just because there's been a precedent in other areas.
But if you're denying just one thing, you're not denying their development. You're talking about a gate in the street.
Right, right.
But I think you also have to consider, is it a real safety risk? If it is, we want to give it full consideration, right?
Then we should delay this.
I think what Charlie, Chairman Midway is saying, do we even get an opinion from the city engineer? Is a speed bump applicable in this case or not? I don't...
My recommendation would be like the same as, as the other street, Oak Hill Lane, is that you make the gate, they could be temporary during home construction, but prior to completion, city dedication, that it be removed unless further decisions made by council, unless, so I, so it, I think it is handy. It's definitely handy on Oak Hill Lane when you've got, when you're building all those houses and you got the concrete trucks in the dub. You do not want people cutting through in that kind of situation, so.
Well, I can tell you on Limestone Lane, where some of us live, with all the construction trucks coming through every day, we see that, but we don't have the option to put up gates to where people can't come through there. And the road's blocked probably half the time, but they're welcome to come through. Everybody's welcome.
Maybe the developers should take it up and, and consider it.
But that's what we're trying to prevent, is, to me, what Ben is saying is pretty much common sense. Have the gate up until the construction is finished, and then the gate comes out, boom.
Trying to prevent what you're experiencing, and just because you're experiencing it doesn't mean we shouldn't prevent it for other people, right?
Well, that's, that's not what, what we're saying here. Do I, do I think the gate will, will come down if we allow the gap? I mean, I don't know.
I guess if we make any condition of approval.
Yeah, the ci, city's not going to approve it with the gate up in place.
It doesn't matter about the city approving anything. When the construction's done, the gate's got to come out, bottom line.
Right.
And then if they, if the city accepts...
Whether the city approves it or not.
Approves it or not, gate's got to come out regardless.
They're saying the gate will not come out until Lexus Way, that that will...
That's not what I'm saying.
That's what they're, that's what they're asking for. My recommendation is...
That's what Ben's recommendation is, yeah.
My recommendation is you have the gate to be temporary until it is public and...
Have it up until construction is over, pull the gate, then go from there.
And they may not agree to my recommendation either, so.
That's, that makes common sense.
That makes sense.
All right, any other questions for the developer or the staff? Anybody from the, yes, sir, please come up and state your name?
Jeff Vanderock. I live at 106 Glendale Circle, which is just up the street from Sunningdale and Cherry Blossom. And I reread the package and I've listened carefully, so I have a core question about this whole construction access. Maybe it's for the staff or for the developer. Where the Sunningdale Street is built, connect to the existing Sunningdale on the top of that red, is that going to be gated during construction, or are you just going to push all this traffic that Kingston gets to avoid up to my neighborhood? I ever heard that and it doesn't say it in the package. It's kind of, what's the plan on that?
Thank you. Good question.
I may have a follow-up.
All right, just stand right up there.
The site's big enough it won't all be done in one phase. So we were trying to do the extension of Sunningdale without making that connection to Old Oxford as the first phase when, when we were laying this out. Staff's condition number 11 is that they want the connection to Old Oxford and improvements there part of the first phase. So to do that, we thought that we would stop the traffic from cutting from the clubhouse with the gate. So you can think of this as, a few years from now, the Old Oxford connection, it, it will not extend all the way to Sunningdale. So the traffic won't be pushed to you until we're in the second, phase two or three, and we actually build the street, making that connection to Sunningdale.
Are you requiring all the construction traffic to come off the new road of Old Oxford into the construction area here?
Yeah, basically, that first part would be kind of coming off there, doing that kind of lower part of Sunningdale would be this part. Because, you know, we're, I mean, we're a family business. We don't have the financial scale, and given that we barely survived the '08, if another recession like that happens, we'd lose everything, so we can't do the whole thing in one go.
Right, so if you're up here, just go to that first phase, not before you get up there.
Yeah, so then that would also kind of keep all the construction traffic on the road where homes are getting built.
And that was my concern to commissioners, and we just, is that neighborhood making more noise than mine, so they're going to get a date, and I don't, it appears like that's not an issue. The other thing is, which has been raised, is that gain at Oak Hill. I've lived there for four years. That street was built, and since I've lived there, I know the city took responsibility for the streets. They weren't public streets, I think, legally, till a few years ago then, correct?
On which street?
On the whole neighborhood, Sunningdale, Glendale Circle.
They're not accepted, they're not public yet. They're, they're public streets, but they're not accepted by the city yet.
Okay, because they plow them and they maintain them.
Maybe the person plowing doesn't know it's not really a public street.
Well, whatever.
Don't tell them!
We, we enjoyed that Oak Hill Lane gate being open when it sure period it was, till it was locked down, because it allows us to come out and avoid all, Sunningdale all the way around to the, what, number two and three accent intersections, that we have to navigate every day, connect a road and, you know, what is the bypass called? Yes. So we could come out there, turn right, turn right, get down to a light down by Lowe's, and, you know, much safer for our travels around the community, so. I question now that to the staff, I guess. I'm curious about what's the legality of that gate still being there.
And it's, you're saying the city does pave those roads, though? Is that right?
Well, as a resident, I know that a couple of years ago, I've been in Glendale for four years, and they came around here fixing sidewalks in people's curb areas, and I was told by the association, they had to get, get it up to standards for the city to accept the streets and making them public streets now, because they've worked before. And that work had been done, so I just, I'm not a lawyer. I'd, I'd assume that it happened then. So my point is, is they, I walk Oak Hill. I walk my dog three times a day, two years, and they're plowing that today, so is it a public street? Why is the gate still up?
So the gate is negatively impacting you, impacted you and you live there.
I appreciate the commissioner comments about, it's a public street.
It's a public street.
And, and we're trying to like protect certain neighborhoods, so maybe they don't do, they don't want to be protected from traffic, mixing community roles. Thoughts?
I can't speak to the plowing, but it is not publicly accepted. We have not made a recommendation. It's not complete yet at this time, so I don't know why they, I don't know why they would have plowed if the city plowed it or two, okay. Was it public works track?
I, I didn't see it, but I know that it was a plowed out.
Okay, but Sunningdale has been accepted, dedicated, that they are, they are all public Glendale.
They're Glendale.
It is public.
So could part of this master plan include taking that gate down then at Oak Hill when these other gates are all sorted out and...
That's what I was speaking to. At Oak Hill, the way it is on the plat now, it is supposed to be heard. There's supposed to be a decision made by city council, HOA, whether, what is going to happen to the gate before it's ever accepted by the city. So that's the way it was put on the plat. And it was a condition by the, it, it was a condition put on by the commission that the gate be installed. Actually, it was a written-in condition for Phase Nine, so that...
I think I remember that. I think it was during COVID.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Price?
Thank you. I, I want to ask, go back to my question, last question... Thank you. I want to ask, go back to my question, last question I asked. We were under Roman numeral three, new business, item D. I thought we were in line to discuss the gains farm property, but we didn't do that. Instead, we went back to Roman numeral two, old business, item A, Cherry Blossom Village. Is that, is that what happened?
Yes, sir.
May I ask why?
Yes, sir. Because new business, A, B, and C, were consent-eligible. We could approve those. We talked about them in the workshop on Monday, on Tuesday. And so there was no opposition to those, so we could approve them without discussing it here tonight. And so we approved those three. We basically took those three out of order, and now we've gone back up to where we're supposed to start. So now we'll work our way down the page for the rest of the evening.
Okay. Becky?
Uh-huh.
All right. So I, I want to say, first of all, I went to Gotham Elementary School, Georgetown High School, Georgetown College, went to graduate school, attended the University of Kentucky. Every place I've ever engaged in civil discourse, the rule was that people take their hats off, men take their hats off in the house. And this man sitting there with a hat on is an offense to that.
Steve, hold on a second. What, what does that have to do with this development?
It has to do with this whole discussion. The man sitting there with a hat on, it's an offense. And you can take it or leave it. It's my complaint.
Okay. We, so noted. All right. Do you have a question about this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And my comment in regard to, I've sat here and listened to this, this proposal, this request for approval. All the discussion has been to accommodate motor transport. Even the main street is named, Lexus is named for a motor vehicle. And I'm going to, I'm going to ask you a question. Are you aware that the zoning ordinance, 2.81, item 4A, I believe it is, says that horticulture, horticulture, that is crop work, is permitted in all zoning districts of Scott County? And I went to the library today to look up the packet, I looked up on the computer, the packet that you all received for this meeting. And this man here, the zoning planning director, nice enough to loan me his packet. And the volume of data in this package is, is just, it's just overwhelming to me. And I think you all owe it to yourselves to slow down. There's no way that I, I got an honors degree in English from Georgetown College, and there's no way that I could process all these data for a meeting like this. And to demand that of every person who sits on this commission is a big load to impose on them.
It is on the agenda. We're going to discuss that in a few minutes. Right now, we're discussing the Cherry Blossom development.
Right. And I will say, in regard to that development.
You haven't gotten to that at all yet.
I'm coming, I just did. I said, if, if you would consider two, item 2.81A of the zoning ordinance, horticulture is permitted in all zoning districts. And you take the man-hours that went into generating all these data, and you say to my, you say to yourself what I say to myself, I can put all my man-hours into production of essential crops. And rather than subject yourselves and all the people in this room, and all the citizens of Georgetown and Scott County, to all these data collections and then review, you could make, take advantage of the horticulture option available and say, we're going to make crop producers out of every resident in Scott County by.
No, we're not going to do that. That is a communist society when you say you have to do something.
No, he's not saying you have to, but to give them the option.
There is, we have not said anywhere in here tonight that, that people in these developments cannot have a garden. Okay. But, Steve, wait a minute. You're, you're getting off course again. And we're going to let these developers finish with their presentation, okay?
Well, let me just, I see in the data here, building inspector, or I heard it discussed. Building inspector means all these houses that you propose, that will be built, are subject to the Kentucky Building Code, and the review of the bill, inspection of the building inspector.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to call your attention, KRS 198B.0Z, 198B.020, item three, I believe it is, says that any structure which serves horticulture in an urban county government, and Georgetown, because of its interlocal agreement with Scott County, functions like an interlo, an urban county government, any structure in such a county and city in the state of Kentucky is exempt from the Kentucky Building Code if it serves agriculture, and that includes horticulture. I'm saying to you, that all these people that are coming in here, assuming that they have to build a $100,000 home, to be served by an automobile, to drive to a $70,000 a year job, and then buy all their food at Kroger, are being distracted from what, from a much better option, which is, they could take the land they own and raise crops on it and live in a tent.
Thank you. That, you're right. That's their option. Right now, we're discussing, you're right. That's their option. They don't have to. It's an option. Okay. Yes, sir. Do you have anything else, Rory? Jax?
Um, we're, I mean, we're agreeable to conditions here. You know, discuss Ben's suggestion of timing as well. You know, we chose Lexis Way. It seemed like an easy, big regional fix for us as, as an endpoint. We just, we really do want that gate for some temporary protection of the clubhouse and the use and the construction.
So Charlie, if we were to, Perkins. Wake up, wake up. If we were to take Ben's suggestion, we would just need to add to the conditions of approval, that the gate would come down at the end of construction or prior to the city accepting it as a public road. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think you could do that, but I agree with Ben. That issue is going to be up entirely to the city anyway.
Right.
We can approve this exactly as they requested it. And when the day comes for it to be taken over by the city, I just don't think they're going to say, sure, keep the gate.
But we, if it makes everybody feel more comfortable with it, we could put it in as a condition.
But you can certainly do that in the meantime. But it's entirely, it's just like when we say something we want on a state road. Well, we can say that, we can beg for it, but it's up to the state.
Right.
It's a city street, it's up to the city. Well, once they accept it, it's not prior to that. Just like traffic signals. We say we feel like there needs to be. That's right. If it doesn't pass the intersection, it's not going to get it. Yeah, that's correct.
Well, it sounds like we don't even know what the city is currently doing in that subdivision, what they should or should not be doing as far as taxpayers' money being spent.
It's up, it's not our role, it's not our authority, it's not our anything. I mean, period.
There's a council member here, maybe he can take it back to the council for discussion.
And it could be that they were cleared by a private contractor. Nobody knows there. So, it may not be the city that has cleared them. All right. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. Real quick, if I may.
If you, if you will stay talking about this development?
Yes, sir. I'm talking about this development. I'm talking about its total reliance on the automobile.
That has nothing to do with it, Steve. We're talking about this development and the way that it's.
Entire discussion has been to accommodate motor transport. And I'm going to say, simply, look at what's happening in Los Angeles. Global warming, and you all, all this, all this tonight totally approves further reliance on motor transport when we should be pedestrianizing Scott County to reduce climate warming, which is causing calamity like we see in Los Angeles.
Steve, will you yield? Will you yield?
Sorry?
You're a parliamentary guy. Will you yield to me?
Yes, sir. Let me just, yes, sir.
Okay. I asked you to yield so we can finish our business.
I'll simply say, I walked here tonight, and you should be encouraging people to walk.
Steve, that has nothing to do with what we're here for tonight, okay? And you can, you can talk with us and address anything you want to, but that is not what we're here for. Some of these things you need to be talking with city council or the county commissioners about. It is not our duty. We're here to discuss the planning and approval of plans and developments. That's what we're here for tonight, not to discuss whether we ought to be farming or driving cars.
I simply urge you.
That's, that's it?
To not improve it.
All right. Any other discussion? We've got that option to approve it there or disapprove it. I will accept a motion with any changes that need to be made or anything else.
I'll make a motion for approval of PSP 2024-43 with the additional condition of approval, which I understood might be inherent, but would be stated specifically, that the gate that has been requested by the developer would come down, be unoperable, whatever the case might be.
Removed.
Removed at the end of construction and before the city would accept it as a public road.
And that's on this phase? That's not?
Yes, on Phase 11. Yes. No, 11. Phase 11.
No, it's.
So it'd be number 12?
Okay.
As a big addition.
Whatever it is, that one.
Is that, so that would be number 12? On the condition of.
Yes, I thought you meant, I was like, I thought we said it was, sorry, yes. I'm way confused now. Yes, it would be condition 12.
Okay. I have a motion by Ms. Singer.
Charlie, do you have a vote? Do I have a say, sir?
No, sir, not yet. We're right in the middle of a, of a motion here. I have a second by Mr. Garrett. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
July 22nd, 2024, was the hottest day on record in Kentucky and globally. It's going to get worse the more people rely on motor transport.
Steve.
You approve this, you're going to.
I'm going to call the sheriff and have your move, if you can't stay on topic. We're not talking about climate change. We're not talking about automobiles. We're talking about approving this development, period. Now I'm getting fed up. I'll take them.
Well, you said you wanted a discussion.
Miss Singer? Yes.
There is an alternative that we could do.
And if you want to add that?
The alternative is not to have the gate and approve this development.
Okay, we've got two different statements here.
That's why I said it.
Mr. Perkins, how do we? Well, but the motion was to approve. Was to approve it with the gate to be taken down. Taken down at the end of construction, at the time it's dedicated to the city.
All right. And I think that solves the original concern raised.
And that's the motion on the floor.
And takes care of the safety concern.
Right. And if that doesn't pass, and we can address.
Yeah, then if you don't, it's fine.
Yes, okay. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
No.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes. You will see Mr. Perkins over here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is PDP 2024 dash, oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, that's been postponed. FDP 2024-63, the Emerson Commercial Final Development Plan for a multi-phase commercial development, including seven mixed-use commercial buildings with associated parking and landscaping located along Emerson Way, Schoolhouse Road, Peachtree Lane, and McClellan Circle.
Thank you. As stated, this is a final development plan. We often do not see final development plans, or what we would qualify as a final development plan, because those tend to be entrusted to staff for internal review. However, this is a unique circumstance that wherein this was approved for development identical to what we are seeing today in 2017. The Sunset Clause had came into effect at that point, being passed in the subdivision regs in 2014. And so, it was given a two-year window with a one-year extension option. At the end of 2019, we had not heard anything, so it just kind of dissolved its preliminary approval. They are since returning to us, years later, to say, we're going to do exactly what we, or what we wanted to do last time, and we would just like to restart the clock for that two-year window to execute what was ultimately improved in 2017. So, this is just a re-up or a restart of the clock for this preliminary development plan, but I'll run through it just for everybody's recollection, because I, I do not believe anybody on the board was in, on the planning commission board at the time of the first hearing in 2017. This is a 10.9 acre par, area. The proposal is to kind of break it up into eight lots, ranging from 0.76 acres to 3.03 acres. It is B4PUD, or our community commercial zone, adjoining several different types of housing options. There's the Emerson Town Homes, which are our three, and the Apartments, which are also our three, I believe, the Harmony Village, or Harmony Ridge, excuse me, residential neighborhood, and several other B4 parcels, which, some of which have been built out, which I'll show very briefly in a moment. In total, the, the proposed development would have about 55,000 square feet of building area, and they are required by ordinance to provide 219 spaces, 31 of which being ADA. The parking provided on the site greatly exceeds that at 741 spaces, with 24 ADA spaces. And they are requesting reapproval of the two variances that we had previously seen in the past application, identical to those ones, as I stated previously, to allow for parking along lot frontages and to the maximum building setback from property in line, which is a unique thing for this zone that I'll get to momentarily. So this is the Emerson kind of commercial residential mix area here. Towards the top of the screen, you can see the Harmony Ridge subdivision. As you move towards the light blue color, that is the elementary school. The south townhomes are in pink. The darker blue color is the Southland Christian Church. The orange area is our subject property. North of the northern area is Emerson Town Homes North, and then there's the Apartments. And then, bound to the north of this is the Lemons Mill Road. This is a greater zoomed-in portion of the parcel here, so you can see there are two lots that have been built out, the one containing the Big B Coffee and several other commercial tenants, and then the bank that was approved in 2021. So, they are looking to build out on the remaining lots here, now that they've kind of mostly settled a lot of their residential components. In the 2017 plan, the strip in between where the Big B Coffee is and McClellan Circle was part of this plan. They have since removed it. Different individuals coming in and wanting to develop it a little bit differently, so they are going to come in for a preliminary plan at a later point. This plan does not include that area anymore as a result. This is just kind of the distribution of what the road ownership and responsibility is. So, the blue lines represent a public road, and then the pink are the private roads. So, while people may go straight through the roadways to get a more straightforward route to get to McClellan Circle, the public road is that all-the-way-around area, which is Peachtree and Schoolhouse and Emerson Way and a bunch of other roads that I think I hit, and Pleasant Valley, Pleasant View Drive. And then again, that internal bit is still Pleasant View Drive-ish, but it is publicly, or privately maintained because of the way that they've proposed the parking situation. The city is not going to adopt something like that. This is the proposed development here. I have a zoomed-in portion of the slides in a moment here, but you can see they're kind of just filling in that area with some buildings pretty close to the road, and parking to the rear of those, and several other outlaw options. So I've kind of rotated us here. I have the north arrow, just for everyone's reference. This is the north side of Pleasant Valley, or Pleasant View Drive, so they propose filling in that one outlot, and then the, the three other lots in this area. And then this is the south side as well, so they're looking to fill in with three buildings on the south side. So, as part of their development plan approval. So as part of their development plan approval in 2017, they requested a waiver variance to allow for parking along road frontages for areas that are in the B4 under an acre. Several of these lots are under an acre right now, and the standard for the zone is that you put your parking, it's essentially a people-forward zone, so the parking is kind of hidden from line of sight with the buildings, but with smaller lots, it's understandable that they would need to put the parking where they could fit the parking. And the previous area here, especially the lots to the south and the areas that are around it, do have that parking in the front. So it is staff recommendation that we continue to allow for that variance to come forward, to allow for them to have that parking in between the road and the building face itself. The second request, which is a unique to the B4 zone as well, is the maximum building setback. So in the zone, it is a maximum distance from property lines as opposed to a minimum distance of property lines, wherein if you were in a B2 zone or a similar zone like that, it is, you have to be at least 50 feet from the road versus in the B4 zone, it says at most you can be 35 feet from the zone, or from the edge of the property boundary. And so this is just a request to allow for the buildings to be set back further than what would be the at-most distance. So instead of being 35 feet, I believe it is measured to be 86 to 90 feet, kind of location-dependent, to allow for that spacing for vehicles parking, for additional amenities that they're looking to install as part of this development and other kind of mobility things. Again, staff does recommend approval of this request as it is in line with their previously approved development plans and just keeping that kind of plan forward. In the 2009 zone change, an open space requirement was established stating that 10% of the area would have to have usable open space. As part of this development plan, staff recommends adding a condition which is specifically referenced as condition 11, saying that they need a check-in essentially with us to make sure they're still meeting that 10% requirement. In a moment, I'll just talk about parking, but they do have an abundance of parking on the property, so if they are finding where there are issues with noncompliance with that expectation and requirement, some of that parking could be converted over to that open space to satisfy that requirement of their zone change without causing, hopefully, issues with their needs for additional vehicular spaces. Hopping into parking right now. So the zone does set a minimum or a standard for regardless of use, a number of spaces you provide per square footage of commercial area, and I believe one space per 250 square feet of gross floor area, which in this instance would be 219 spaces, 31 of which being ADA. ADA standards are set by the ADA, so regardless, they are proposing 741 spaces, so they do greatly exceed that value. So if additional open space needs to be provided in order to satisfy the requirements of the zone change, they were zone, the zone change application and ordinance, that can be an option available to them. They will need to add additional ADA parking spaces on all of the lots just to make sure that they meet the requirements set by the federal government. Additional items to just briefly talk about is in 2017, they had a plan to enhance pedestrian access and circulation by widening their road, or widening their sidewalks beyond what is the typical minimum for commercial residential areas, so they are going to go with a six-foot-wide sidewalk, which I believe, and you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, is that constructed at this time?
It's not on the whole project.
So it.
What it is, any lot is developed.
Okay. So it is in progress. Some areas have it, so we would just, they're going to be providing that with some street trees and other kind of greenery to kind of make that connection. Furthermore, in this area, the Legacy Trail does kind of travel up Schoolhouse Drive and then cut over and then kind of go through the neighborhood, almost like a Z shape through the neighborhood, and so they would be providing that as well, which may be credited for their open space. Regardless of all that, we do just want to make sure they're in good standing. Vehicle perimeter landscaping, property perimeter landscaping, and interior landscaping is all required as part of this development. We'll be looking at their final plans to make sure that they're in compliance with that, and they're putting in the appropriate amount of areas and entries and ratios and everything like that to make sure we're up to snuff and all that type of stuff. Last item is this is in the Wellhead area. They did meet with the Wellhead Committee previously, and any new developments would have to just be triple-checked by them if it starts getting in that, into the precarious area of that one, so we'll just be working with them to make sure that they continue to comply with the conditions of the Wellhead Committee. All in all, in the grand scheme, staff recommends approval of, and this would be the final development plan, I do apologize for the language on the PowerPoint, the final development plan for the Amerson Commercial area, subject to 17 conditions with one amendment to a condition that I will get to momentarily. This was just born out of a conversation with their attorney earlier today, so I don't have a copy for everybody, and I don't believe it is in the PowerPoint, but I'll talk about it momentarily. It would be the continuance of their variances that were approved previously to the maximum building setback and the allowing of parking lots along road frontages and property boundaries, subject to the first five conditions here, which there's nothing really particularly atypical in those ones. The next seven, six here, which again, pretty typical ones for development, and then the final six here. I will call the question, condition 16, which talks about the traffic control devices. We are aware that this area is a highly trafficked area with the residential areas of various densities around it, and the potential of this commercial area really kind of pushing it over the point where a traffic light or other traffic improvements are necessary. Staff had included a condition that they would be responsible for installation of the traffic lights at their expense, and the staff and the applicant and staff have kind of discussed some language to better fit what the KYTC expectation is and kind of fit what they're kind of going with, and we believe this amended one, which I'm about to propose, is the most appropriate alternative to the language that's currently in the staff report. Specifically, it would state that traffic control devices, including a traffic light, shall be installed and paid for according to KYTC regulations. Neither the city of Georgetown nor Scott County shall be responsible for the installation and/or cost of the traffic signal, and that timing would be at the discretion of KYTC. So essentially, it's saying, we're going to just say KYTC will tell who's putting it, who's going to pay for the bill. And then it is absolving the city of Georgetown and the city of, and Scott County from the responsibility of the installation or cost of the traffic signal. So it'd be more so a conversation of saying the applicant will have, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, the applicant and the KYTC will kind of work with each other based off of KYTC's regs. And so the timing is obviously up to KYTC always, but this just kind of clarifies who's responsible for what and who's going to be, that type of thing. So I will give the language over to Mr. Perkins in a moment, but I just wanted to kind of brief you guys on that one, so.
So that's, you're basically saying you're just removing the city and the county from responsibility of paying for that, that it's the developer's responsibility to pay for it with the approval of the state?
Well, in accordance with the state regulation.
Right.
So if the state says, we'll take it, the state, it's the state reg.
Yeah.
If the state regulations say that it's the applicant's responsibility, if it's in the state regulation, they would just be told to follow the state rules.
Gotcha.
Unless, again, I'll defer, is that correct? Okay, we're good. I want to make sure I get everything right and hit all the nails as they should be hit.
Back up to variances and waivers. Number one with addressing the setback, although it's further back, I mean, the sides of the building are closer, they not get credit for that, which is just kind of a big point.
So you're talking about like the top lot here where it's, the distance is there? In this, let me look at the language board, I'd have to triple-check it.
Staff would also just like to clarify, as was discussed at the planning commission workshop, that these variances had been previously approved at an earlier time, and variances do carry with the land. And so as we move forward, we would just like to be clear that this is just a reaffirmation of those so that all of the paperwork's on one page together.
Gotcha.
So as far as whether or not they get credit for it, I believe that that would be a moot point. They've already been granted this variance.
All right. Are you through, Elise?
I'm just checking the regulations on the design standards right now.
Okay. Does the developer have any statements or presentation?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm Dick Murphy. Just, I just have a couple of things to say. I do have that handout of that revised note 16. I'll give it over here and ask Mr. Perkins to take one and pass it. Mr. Chairman, I was out of the room when you swore your witnesses in, but I do swear to whatever Mr. Perkins asked us to swear to. And the, I represent, I'm Dick Murphy. I represent Anderson Communities. Mike Kraft, our development director, is with us. Clay Johnson, our engineer from Tar Group, is with us. This is basically the same development plan that was approved in 2017. As Ms. Ketz mentioned, we, it sunsetted in 2019. We came in with new plans to reaffirm this. So what you're doing is essentially reaffirming a plan which was approved in 2017. Some of this has already been built. You've probably been out there and seen it. Some of it's already there. We're proceeding with the same plan. It's a consistent plan for the area. Setbacks are consistent with the built buildings out there and what was approved in 2017. So you're basically reaffirming it. We did get two variances in 2017, the same ones which Ms. Ketz mentioned to you, and as Mr. Fleming mentioned to you, variances do run with land, but we agree that you can reaffirm those so that they are in the same set of approvals, so they're all there in one place. We, on the note on the traffic signal, which is note 16, we're revising that because the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet regulations say that the applicant, the person who pays for it is the applicant or and/or the cabinet at the discretion of the cabinet. So with everything with the Highway Department, we do exactly what they say that we got to, you know? We do what they say. But there is a possibility, something, the cabinet might come in and say, hey, we want that signal now, we'll pay for part of it. So this allows that possibility to be there. If not, the applicant has to pay for it, and we clarify in here that it is, the people who are not going to pay for it is Scott County nor the city of Georgetown. Ms. Ketz, there is one, two words to add to this, which Ms. Ketz read when she read it to you. It's not in the text where it says, neither the city of Georgetown nor Scott County shall be responsible for the, she added, installation or cost of the traffic signal. So you just need to add that word, installation or cost of the traffic signal on there. So, but we do agree with the, other than that, we agree with the staff's conditions on it. We thank you for hearing this. We're doing this so we can proceed to continue with the completion of the Amerson Center there on it, and thank you very much. We'd be happy to answer any questions you all might have. Thank you.
I've got a question, Mr. Murphy. With the changes, did that impact the path of the Legacy Trail any more? Still, setback to things, still the same?
It'll still be the same, as far as I know, yeah. That's an important, Mr. Anderson is very keen on getting that finished and the trail being there.
I have a question regarding Pleasant View Drive, and I kind of touched on it on Tuesday. Then kind of going back, the more I look at it, the more, the way that Lemons Mill Elementary is using Schoolhouse Road is not conducive to utilizing Peachtree Lane to access drop-off and pickup lanes. So are you anticipating just having that flow of traffic go straight over that Pleasant View Drive area that you guys will be maintaining?
Well, Pleasant View Drive is already there on the ground. It's already being used. It is a private road, and the only reason it's private is because of the angle parking that's there. When we got this approved back, back when in the 2010s, that wasn't something the city wanted to maintain. So it's, it's private, so Mr. Anderson has to maintain it, but it's open to the public, so it's fully, fully open to public use.
Have you considered taking out that angle parking, given the fact that you have so much excess parking with this development, so that it could potentially become a public road?
Well, that hasn't been considered at this point. I mean, the, this is modeled on the Townley Center in Lexington off of Leestown Road, Leestown and New Circle Road, where we have that angle parking, and it's the, the businesses have really liked it because it gives what I call a sort of a village feel to the development where you can come in and park and get right into the front there. And we're trying to maintain that village feel in this development as it's been constructed that way. Obviously, as things go on, you know, I guess that can be looked at in the future, but it is constructed that way, and we'd like to, like to build it the way we planned, and we'll, but to see how that goes on it, but we, we're not, we have not considered a change at this point, and we'd hope that you would not change it because we haven't even finished our development at this point. But we do understand that traffic's going through there.
Yeah, with the traffic with Baptist going in, the Fox Run development just is building like crazy back there. That school, the traffic for that school is very, very heavy. The traffic for Southland Church is very, very heavy. So there's, there's a large amount of traffic running through there, and the excess parking, it just, it just gives me pause that we're going to use that as more parking when it could potentially be considered for a better use to help control the traffic.
Well, we don't want to make a high, this, one of the reasons behind this, the concept behind this angle parking is it's a traffic calming feature. It slows people down, even if they're not going to a store there, even if they're just driving through, when they go through it, it slows the traffic down. And we'd be very hesitant to take that out at this point because if we take it out, that speeds up the traffic going through there.
I have no issue with the roundabout, I'm just talking about parking.
Well, I mean, the parking in the roundabout all serve, serve the same way. They're planned together. It's, we don't want to make, speed up the traffic going through there to the school. That wouldn't be good for the businesses, it wouldn't be good for the community there on it. So we'd like to go ahead and build this as planned. Obviously, if things happen in the future, it's something that can be looked at.
Mike, if I might make a suggestion.
Yeah.
And I understand, you know, right now, there's, there's no parking there, so people use it, and once the lines get in, and Jessica's exactly right, it's going to create a problem. Take a trip to Morehead. I don't know if you've been up there, but they used to have angled parking on Main Street on both sides, and then it, and then just two lanes. Well, a number of years ago, they alternated blocks and taken out that parking, so it's kind of a S, a snakey through there, but they've got that angle parking on, on one side of the street, and the next block, it's on the other side, and so you have more space to get through, more lanes, but because it, it's curves, it slows people down. So if you have nothing to do one day, drive up to Morehead, drive down Main Street and look at it there.
Yeah, our goal here was to, this is where we have the 10-foot sidewalks.
Yeah.
We want to really slow the traffic down because we're, we feel that this is going to be more pedestrian friendly. I think even now with the traffic that's going through there, they're probably going faster than we really would want them to, so.
Because there's no parking.
Correct, correct. I apologize, I don't know the names of the roads out here, but the, of the Pleasant View, if you go south at that intersection before you. if you go south at that intersection before you get to the, the diagonal parking, you know, those, those loops are, are public roads. People can use that if, if the other road's too congested for them or, or what have you. But we, we, we hope that people will use that Pleasant View. Where the diagonal parking are, we, we do like traffic coming through there. We just want it to be slowed down.
Understand the purpose. Any other questions? Comments? Yes, sir. If you can stay on track.
On track is the track of the automobile you're, you're about to approve. You're considering approval of another application that all this conversation has been to accommodate the mode of, mode of traffic. And I urge you to reject and to deny and to vote against approval of this project for that reason.
Thank you.
For all the reasons I cited in regard to the previous application.
I understand. Every meeting that you oppose that, all that same. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, Avery Bustle. I'm here representing Southland Christian Church. And all this is perfectly fine. It's great. But the biggest thing I have from the people there is what we've already talked about. I assume the stoplight we're talking about at Pleasant View and the bypass, correct?
Yeah.
So I know that's not you all, okay? I realize that. But I want to encourage everybody and anybody, and I'm going to start making some phone calls, KYTC. That is very dangerous. Thank goodness, about six months ago, maybe, the sheriff is out there every Sunday morning after both services. And I can only imagine how the school is. I assume the sheriff's there then. I don't know. But, you know, for everybody in the room, we desperately need a stoplight there sooner than later before something bad happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bustle.
I'll just say one thing about the light. We've, we've done two separate traffic counts to try to get the light approved, and we still do not meet the warrants.
Wow.
That the state requires. So we're in favor of the light, but until we beat those warrants, they will not let us construct it.
Get these rest of these buildings built. I bet you'll make the number of them.
Yep.
Yeah. It's always after the fact.
It's always after the problem.
Yeah. Any other questions from commission? I will entertain a.
I'll make a motion for approval of this D P twenty twenty-four dash sixty-eight with the change to condition sixteen, as noted in the handout, and to add installation or cost.
I have a motion.
I'll second that term.
Second about Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Singer?
Yes.
And the chair. You will see Mr. Perkins over here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is CMA twenty twenty-four dash sixty-eight for the Gaines Farm property. This is a zoning map amendment, amendment for one hundred and eighty-two point four-four acres from A-one agriculture to a B-four P U D, community, commercial, R-two P U D, medium density residential, and C-one conservation located at thirteen sixty-seven Payne's Depot Road. This is a public hearing, and I am so opening that hearing.
Uh, thank you. So as you stated, and I'll just kind of quickly run through it, this is an A-one zone parcel measuring about a hundred and eighty-two acres, and they're looking to rezone it to the C-one conservation zone, the B-four P U D, and a R-two P U D. This is on the southwest, at the southwest side of the intersection of Payne's Depot Road and McClellan Circle. They do propose a multi-use development. We seem to have a lot of those as of late, and the trend is going, or is proposed to continue with the rezoning or potential rezoning of this property. This is an aerial shot of the property here. You can see the Lavender and Bloom Farm that kind of cuts into the larger farm. You can also see the McClellan View Residential Subdivision, the North Side Christian Church. And then to the south, that winding edge is the Kane Run Creek, which is our natural boundary for our urban service areas upon which we base our green belt, which I will get to momentarily. So this is kind of the general distribution of how the zones would kind of lay out, just using colors before we get into their concept plan. And we have the commercial kind of up front, residential in the middle, and then green belt in the rear. When we refer to zoning map amendments, we look at KRS one hundred point two-one-three, which are our findings requirements, which state that before a map amendment is granted, the planning commission must find that the map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan, or in absence of such finding, that one or more of the following shall apply, and such finding be recorded in our records and of our body and also the legislative bodies. Item A being that the existing zoning classification given to the property is inappropriate, and the proposed zoning classification is a more appropriate alternative. And item B being that there have been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within which, within the area involved, which were not anticipated at the time of the adopted comprehensive plan, and which have altered the basic character of the area. This is our future land use map for the twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan that was adopted in July. The purple area is our mixed-use designation. The light yellow area is our single-family residential designation. And then the green is the urban service boundary, or I'm sorry, the darker green is the green belt. And then the lighter green on the other side of Kane Run Creek is our agricultural designation. So as this map is, is showing to us visually, mixed use being along that intersection area with a deceleration of use and intensity as you approach the green belt before the green belt protective boundary. We are working with the city of Georgetown to get an official ordinance that would be amending the green belt to align with the twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan. At this time, we are still operating under the ninety-one plan, but the applicant has so graciously agreed to work with us on getting that and reflecting that green belt boundary with this plan and with their areas that they're proposing to be rezoning for conservation use. This is their concept plan. Again, I use their colors here. I'll pull the colors in a moment, but this is kind of the distribution of the coloring with the purple in the front, gold in the middle, and then that green in the side and rear. As I stated, the comprehensive plan provides guidance when we are considering zoning map amendments. And the future land use map shows the area as planned, mixed use, low-density residential and green belt. The, it is staff's conclusion that the proposed zones and the zoning map amendment that they've submitted align with the future land use designation for the area. The B-four zone is, offers a high level of design control and is also intended and is beginning, is proposed to be amended at a later public hearing today to be our mixed-use zone where it would allow for a planned commercial residential mix, which is the mixed use. It also, again, has some design controls and would allow for that very community-focused development style, which is often seen in our, in mixed-use areas throughout the country. As you approach Kane Run Creek, the, the proposed zoning kind of, or the proposed activity kind of decreases with apartments in the, in between the commercial and the single-family residential before proceeding to the single-family residential, which staff believes also aligns with that lower density and the deceleration of, of use intensity as you approach the creek. And then finally, the areas that are being recommended to be rezoned for green belt use are the C-one zone. In this instance, is also aligning with the comprehensive plan. And so staff finds that the future land use map and the proposed zoning map amendment do align with one another. And thus, they satisfy KRS one hundred point two-one-three, item one, and there is no need to consider items A or B. I did not exactly go into them in the staff packet, but I do want to identify that at the time of the comprehensive plan, we did not know of the proposed zoning map amendments other places around the property. So that is also an item that was also not under consideration. So it does, in effect, also consider item B, sub-item B. But again, since it satisfies item one, there was, at least in staff's opinion, no need to really go into a thorough analysis of items A and B because that first sentence has been satisfied. Again, this is our concept plan here. As part of their plan, they were, they submitted a traffic study here. They submitted a, a version that was previously done for the commercial areas only, so only at the intersection of Payne's Depot Road and McClellan Circle. If this were to proceed, staff would expect a master plan that would have a full study. But before I get into that one, I do just want to kind of show this plan here. The areas in the circles in red are the locations that were analyzed and reviewed by the plant, by the traffic study. And ultimately, this commercial-only traffic study stated that amongst their, in summation of their sixteen uses that they proposed potentially occurring on the property, the total trip generation during the AM peak hours would be fifteen hundred trips. And in the PM peak hours would be eighteen hundred trips. The intersection of Payne's Depot and McClellan Circle already has a light, but those two other circles specifically along McClellan Circle and along Payne's Depot Road would be likely generating the volume of trips that would necessitate a traffic signal or at least some other controlled traffic movement mechanism, such as an R hut that we saw previously with the Georgetown Commons on the other side of McClellan, on the other side of Lexington Road. As I've stated kind of repeatedly, there really is no residential component considered in this. So if this were to proceed and we start taking next steps towards actually solidifying the development process, one of those steps would be getting an actual up-to-date traffic study based off of their concept plan that they are showing today. And then adopting those recommendations as part of that process. However, given that this is already kind of generating that level of trips that was really pointing in the direction of needing those improvements to the roadways, staff felt it was appropriate that we could proceed at this time with the understanding that they would be doing a master plan. And as part of that master plan, they would be doing their study. This is just on the map here, an imposing of the concept plan and the kind of aerial imagery in the background with the three locations identified. The pink location is a connection to an existing stub into McClellan View subdivision, which is Leota Way. They would be proposing kind of making that connection through the neighborhood, kind of following around. I articulated it with the red line. If you go up, you would ultimately go up through McClellan View, kind of making that left and then that right, and then a right and a left, and then getting to that intersection of Finn Castle and Ferguson Lane. So this would also kind of connect through as you approach south to the connection kind of at the midpoint between Finn Castle and McClellan Circle, which would be the stub that is existing that presently serves the Lavender and Bloom Farm. That is a cut that is, was approved when the sub, when the road was put in. And they are proposing use of that and expanding of that area to support the increased activity on the site with potential roadway improvements. You can kind of see that blue line kind of would go through the commercial areas as shown before connecting to kind of the road that would almost serve as the division line between the commercial zoning and the residential zoning, which is identified in purple. That would ultimately connect to Payne's Depot Road at the Frontage Road Five, which is where the Limestone Farms Distillery and the paddocks at Limestone proposed their, one of their entrances be located. And just for brief recollection purposes, that area in their traffic study was identified as needing a light at some point. So the combination of these two larger activities and more intense uses would likely point, really more strongly point in the direction of getting a light installed in that area. And then KYTC would work on the signal timing and everything like that. Again, as part of their concept plan, as I stated, we have that commercial in the front, the mixed use in the middle-ish, and then the apartments and the single-family in the rear. This is a P U D request, though. So we also have some P U D waivers and variances that I'll run through here. Some of these, staff does recommend the board consider approving, some of which staff recommends a deferment to a later date to actually see the concept plan, or see the master plan, or to see the actual individual site development plans to better analyze whether or not those should be something that is permitted. In those instances, staff felt it was inappropriate to say, or recommend in favor of something when we don't exactly know what it looks like just based off of a concept plan, and felt like an actual master plan for the site would really help us understand whether or not these accommodations would be warranted. So this is our listing here. The first three requests have to do with the single-family lot layouts. So specifically to lot width, two front yard setback, and two lot area. Chairman Mifflin and I had discussed previously this week, probably yesterday at this point, about the patterns of this type of request for additional or reduced lot area, reduced lot width, and reduced front yard setback. The front yard setback and lot width are pretty often requested items as part of a P U D, bringing the neighbors, or bringing the houses a little bit closer to the road, kind of having more of that person feel with the houses, again, in that proximity. And then we also looked at the lot area side of things, which is an item that we can discuss amongst the board about that minimum lot size. They are requesting a fifteen hundred square foot reduction in the minimum lot area, so going from seventy-five hundred square feet to six thousand square feet. When I looked at previously approved zoning map amendments by the same applicant or in similar instances, we did see some communities kind of having that, but they were more so kind of like sixty-five hundred square foot minimums and other items like that. But more often than not, when the actual subdivision plats came in for the actual individual lots when it was being phased, the lots really never really got that as close to the minimum as was requested at the time of zoning map amendment. So if we would like to pause here, you guys can discuss about that one. But if not, I'll continue. We can discuss it later.
Well, I have a question about that. So we really don't have to approve all these lot size variants for them still to have a development? Is that correct? They just have to change it a little bit?
You can approve it presently as, as part of the zone change. We can also approve it at individual subdivision plat phases when those come in, if they was approved, or we can prove it as part of a con, or a master plan component. There are multiple points along the way where we can say, you know what? Let's talk about it then. Let's, let's worry about that item now and defer this till later.
So we can approve the zone change tonight, but not the development plan, basically?
You can, you do have that option. The applicant didn't submit it as part of this, so we, I did want to include it as part of our analysis. But if the board so chooses, you can instead say, let's just wait for all of these requests until a later date. Or do some of them now, some of them later, all of them now, none of them later. It's really kind of at your guys' discretion and everything like that.
Why don't you go ahead and finish your presentation, and then we can jump in here with some questions and discussions gathered too.
Moving to our apartment-specific ones, they do request building height accommodations. So they're requesting instead of the thirty feet in two stories to be forty-two feet in three stories. It is a common trend we are seeing right now with, or at other areas of development, specifically the paddocks at Limestone and the Georgetown Commons Apartments, where developers are preferring to go up to consume less land going horizontally.
Yeah.
And having that additional story kind of allows for it. But under current regulations, we are capped at the two stories thirty feet. So they are requesting that item there. And then the front yard setback is, they're just requesting the flat rate of twenty-five feet. Under the current schedule and area dimension regulations, the standard is twenty-five feet. But when you want to go taller, then what is your zone maximum? So between that and fifty feet, you add an additional foot of horizontal setback for each foot of additional vertical setback. So they would just be essentially requesting to waive that additional horizontal for vertical request. Both of those items, staff does recommend deferring to the PDP, either for the master or the apartment complex. PDP kind of at the board's discretion, just to essentially, let's get a more solid plan in. Pertaining to both the apartments and the single-family area, this just has to do with density kind of transferring around. So their whole area for residential development is over, I think it's over a hundred acres, or it's near to a hundred acres right now. And at the R-two density, it would allow for a blanket of twelve, twelve. And at the R2 density, it would allow for a blanket of 12 dwelling units an acre. They are requesting to kind of reduce the density in the back, closer to cane run, closer to that green line, and kind of push it more toward the front, so concentrate the density in the front, reducing the density in the rear to kind of allow for that deceleration of intensity of use. Staff does find that that kind of meets our intents, intentions of the low-density residential designation in this area and the repeated statements of reducing that intensity as you go towards the boundaries of the city. And so staff would recommend approval of something along those lines. I did include some math in the staff report. So in the single-family areas, you're looking at about 2.9 dwelling units an acre versus in the apartment areas, you're looking at 22.3. So this would allow for essentially the total site density to be about 6.25 dwelling units an acre when you keep, when you consider the blanket approach, but it's just you're bunching up the blanket at the front and you're kind of letting, have less blanket in the rear. My last two, or the last two requests, both of which we, staff recommends deferring to the PDP, has to do with uses permitted and the frontage for along McClellan Circle. So the uses in the B4 zone do not, at this point, identify hotels as, as a use that's in the zone. However, in the PUD ordinance, it does say that they do have the option, or at point of commission discretion, additional uses may be considered on a case-by-case basis. Without knowing what the, where it's going to go, how big it's going to be, what the plan is, staff would recommend that you defer that request to a later point, identifying now that that is something they're interested in, but just saying, let's actually see the plan before we start going forward. And then the last one is the double frontage requirement. So any property line adjoining a street is a front yard by our standards. And some of these lots and the commercial areas, the outlots specifically, will have a road that is internal to the area of which they would be accessing, which may function as a front side, but also McClellan Circle would also be considered a front side. So these are double frontage on the north and south. Again, without knowing what the plans are exactly for who's going where and how that's all going to go out, staff would recommend that you would defer that one to a later date when we actually see a development plan coming in, if it makes it to that point, so we can discuss on a case-by-case basis or perhaps kind of get a more understanding of what is actually going to go in these outlots. So again, most of these are deferments, but I just wanted to identify them specifically because it was something brought up by the applicant and so that we can open it for discussion as part of the zone change, if you feel so inclined. Our last item here is having to do with the condition that I mentioned adding at the workshop, which was the 10% usable open space condition. It is a condition that we've applied to multiple PUD areas and essentially in, with giving the kind of flexibility from the regulations that a PUD receives, there must be a public benefit, that kind of way to kind of balance everything out. So more often than not, applicants will work with us to provide usable open spaces of public benefit that would therefore allow for consideration to be appropriately allowed for. It's a really rough one. But anyway, so to kind of, kind of balance these out a little bit more, staff has recommended an additional condition eight that would be a 10% usable open space. It would not, at this, the language, I believe, let me find it. It would be 10% minimum open space as calculated based upon the areas that would be developed. So that would be the R2 PUD and the B4 PUDs. Improvement options that may be considered but are not limited to trail easements in C1 zone areas, public-private parks available for all residents within the neighborhoods, neighborhood loop trail with street trees that would be constructive above minimum standards for sidewalk construction. So instead of a four-foot wide sidewalk, you do six-foot wide with some nice trees along it that kind of has a very engaging public setting. We did speak with the applicant about it, and I do have some items from them that I'm going to give you guys to kind of illustrate and I'll turn it up, possible option available. Staff recommends, if you guys do not mind distributing that. Staff recommends that we include this condition and then obviously they would work with us to make sure that that process and that intention of having that usable space would continue to be satisfied. And so that would be a condition eight. My last slide here is just illustrating some of the buffering requirements. These are not the only buffering requirements that we would be expecting. There are vehicle use area buffer requirements, there are other property perimeter requirements, specific uses against specific uses require additional items. And so I just wanted to illustrate very briefly that this is a preliminary sneak peek on what potential buffering we would see in this area. I'd specifically like to call out the areas in purple on this map here, talking specifically about agriculture to develop, to urban developed buffering, as well as there's property perimeter and more property perimeter buffering. It's not illustrated on your guys' graphic that we just submitted, but those would be kind of in conjunction with one another to add more greenery to the area. I will defer any comments about the specific handout I just gave you guys to the, if you had questions about the specific logistics of what they're proposing, I would defer that to them. But if you guys have questions about the open space or the buffering things, I can always do my best to answer them as best as possible.
I have a question. Maybe it's because I can't read it, see it.
That's okay.
So the bottom section is, where you got the dots there, that is in the floodplain, correct?
Yes, the hatch is the floodplain.
Okay. And then on the upper part, that is not in the floodplain, where the, I can't read what it says there.
Yeah, it's like an area, kind of a strip that's not hatched in between that and the road. Yes, that would not be floodplain. That would be proposed to be rezoned C1, I believe. And so that area could be a potential excellent option for a trail installation for the neighborhood or for the general public to utilize.
Okay. So that won't be developed into?
It is the C1 zone. It's very managed zone where there's not, there's very few things you can do with it.
And simply because I can't see it, what is the very upper end of that? What does that say? What is that, towards the end? Is it all part of the same?
By buffer, which...
Right here. What is this right here?
I'm not entirely certain. There seems to be, there's kind of like a wall patch here, where it appears to be slightly out of the floodplain. That may be an issue with the map itself. It may also be a true area where it's just not floodplain. We would have to review that on a case-by-case basis to see what was going on in that area to determine if it was floodplain.
So what, what is the total acreage between the, what, how many acres is in the floodplain versus this other area that you're talking about here, the greenbelt or the trails or whatever this is? Do you know how many acres that is altogether?
Do you know the difference?
Forty acres or...
Yeah.
Forty, yeah, and there's going to be somewhere between five and 10 of its outside of floodplain.
Yeah, so we'd say, yeah, 40 acres of, of C1, five to 10 acres outside of the floodplain, that it would be still zone C1.
Thank you, thank you.
If there's not anything else, I'll just go to my final slides, which is ultimately, based off of the KRS standards 213, specifically part one, staff finds that this zoning map amendment does satisfy that requirement. And therefore, staff recommends approval of the zone change request from A1 to B4 PUD and R2 PUD, as well as the C1 for the areas that we've described for greenbelt purposes. There are eight conditions. I did make some tweaks to some conditions, they're just very minor things, but I'll hop to those in a second. The first five conditions are here. The first ones are kind of our things, you have to annex in, all the areas in the greenbelt need to be C1, follow our rules. Condition four is about just off-site road improvements and public water sewer improvements. It's their responsibility to install things as needed. Condition five is talking about the area master plan. It would be essentially a development plan that we would see before a development plan got submitted. That would give us a more set-in-stone idea of what the breakdown of things would be. As part of that requirement, staff would request an up-to-date traffic study. And that would be for all of the areas, so the single-family houses, the multifamily housing area, and then also the commercial areas. So that would be an item submitted at the same time. Condition six talks about, this is an approval for the concept plan as shown, that we needed, we need the site master plan for the entire site submitted, following the general, general layout that we're seeing today, so not a huge ton of variation. If we do not see progression to final development plan, final subdivision plan, preliminary final, if we do not see progress within a three-year period of time, that can put the application in a weird limbo position where we would essentially evaluate it and say, is anything happening here? Do we need to consider a downzoning before intensity, before uses were occurring to A1 or a more appropriate zone at that point? It is a condition we've applied several times to other operators, just to make sure that things are happening on a property, we're just not having an area sit for 20, 30 years, just waiting for something to happen to it. An item that I did not bring up, that I will bring up briefly here, is condition seven, which is talking about the access construction route system. The standard for units to a one access point is 200 single-family units and 100 multifamily units. In previous instances, we have said for areas that are mixed single-family and multifamily units, it would be, 150 would be your cap before you would have to start making more connections to other roads. I specifically include a condition that new roadway construction, traffic and that type of building should not originate from Leota Way, which is the neighborhood road in McClellan View. They should be coming from an appropriately sized arterial that is built to withstand the pressures of large construction vehicles and utility vehicles. And so they need to be originating their activities from either the purple location or the blue location, obviously either one works. And then they kind of make their way back to Leota. They do not start at Leota, kind of pressuring that neighborhood before it is ready to be kind of absorbing that if it ever comes to it. So that is a condition there, and I apologize for kind of missing it. And then the eighth, and I do want to state the ninth condition, the eighth being the open space requirement. It is a 10% usable open space based off of the areas of the state, of the R2 and the B4 areas, including, there's several options we can work with the applicant, and they've kind of supplied a potential option that they've also considered. The ninth condition, which I apologize for failing to recognize, was that the max, it was, it's just a cap on the number of units. The concept plan says 671 and the condition is saying 671 to make sure that we are not exceeding what we are seeing in our concept plans.
That's it?
Do you want more?
No.
Even better.
Do you, do you have extra copies of those? I don't see that in my packet here.
Condition eight and condition nine are not in the packet right now. But I can leave this up on the screen and I believe it is represented in the, it's not going to be in there. I can leave it up on the screen here for our purposes. It's essentially, I mean, they're up there.
Does the commission have any other questions for Elise?
Can you put that grid back up that had the, could approve this, defer this?
Yes. So this is their PUD waiver slide with the mixed use areas. It feels like a lot, but it is kind of distributed against three different pockets of development style.
Okay.
Do we have that in our packet? That right there?
It is in text form, so it is in a list form. For illustrative purposes, I do not like to give you guys large text-filled pages when possible. And so for this one, I decided that a table would be a more appropriate mechanism to illustrate things.
Whole page of all that's on there.
Yeah, you do have a whole page. I believe it is page five.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
So just as a, back to the, the commercial development, just as a general rule, where you got a, we're going to have another road running through there, and so we'll have a setback off of that road because that's the entrance into the lot. There won't be entrances into the commercial development from McClellan Circle. So how, how does that setback work? Or is there a setback, or they can use it as parking between there and?
You can put parking in setback areas. In this instance, even if you don't have access to a road, if you front a road, it is a setback. So if you don't, if you're just using the internal driveway, like you would have a front setback from that one, and even though you're not using McClellan Circle as your road, it is a front setback from that one. It's just a general language that we've had in our ordinances about double frontage lots. So they are requesting to say, don't count McClellan Circle as a, as a front, front road, instead count it as something else.
So it could vary, it could get closer to McClellan Circle or farther away?
I wouldn't anticipate that it would...
I'll wait and let, let them ask.
Yeah, I would, I would anticipate they would have a more articulate response to that one.
I'm just thinking of Lexington, well, can't think of the name of the development up there off Man of War.
Hamburg.
Hamburg. You've got all those, you know, Red Lobster and all through there that they're accessed through the internal road, and we basically have the same thing here. So that setback from Man of War, or is there a setback? Does there have to be?
I do not know Lexington's regulations, so I would have to defer that one to the Lexington planner.
All right. If there are no other questions, we'll hear from the developer. Sure, we'll have some questions.
Good evening. Nick Nicholson here on behalf of Ball Homes. Buddy Goodwin and Brian Stevens with Ball is also here, as is Rory Kaylee with EA that handled the concept plan that you see there. And, you know, together, we're happy to answer any kind of questions you all may have. I will kind of, out of, you know, deference to your all's time, and also I know that this isn't the last agenda item today, and so I will kind of, you know, spare you all from the usual kind of formal presentation that I have when it comes to a zone change. The good news is, we are in complete agreement with the staff report and all of the conditions that they are on, including the kind of, the deferments that were talked about. For kind of the exact situation you just brought up with regards to dual frontages, it can create a very small buildable area when you have those types of dual frontages. And so we, we just kind of want to seek some relief, but we also understand, well, show us what you're actually going to do before you all have to make that decision. And so we have absolutely no problems with those deferrals. On the single-family lot sizes, we would like some kind of guidance in that regards with what we are proposing in order to make sure that when we bring in the next phase, which is the area master plan, that we kind of have some feeling that we know that we can have kind of, you know, a certain size lot. These are the minimums, they are not by any means the typical. So this is just for the kind of unusual situation where because of the certain kind of angle of one of the roads, we might have to be down to kind of a 50 length minimum. The typical is, I believe, 53 by 120, and so it is much closer to the 6,500 lot size as opposed to 6,000, but it's just kind of there for the minimum in case there is kind of those unusual little areas as we kind of work with the topography of the property. This is exactly kind of what we did just down the road with regards to the Mark Development and the other properties kind of that are off McClellan's. We did the same type of kind of minimums, but very rarely do the lots actually hit those minimums. I will, I'm happy to answer any questions. The wonderful thing about this application is that you all just updated a very specific future land use map, and it's specific in nature to exactly what we are proposing as far as the uses and the zones. And even more so, your all's comprehensive plan have what I call a small area plan as well in there that specifically looked at this acreage in this intersection. I think it was neighborhood center area two, and it's exactly what we are recommending that this be. But we also know that we are at the very, very beginning here. This is just a concept plan, this is nothing we can pull permits off of. We have to come back with a area master plan. Once we get an area master plan approved, we have to come back with specific subdivision plans and development plans that will get into all of the design issues that we really kind of hash out with regards to these development plans. The exhibit that we kind of passed out was just an example of how we could possibly comply with the 10% open space. Based on our conversations on Tuesday, we wanted to get you all something quick to be able to show, yes, we can basically increase the number of access points into the greenway, yes, we can add more of a pedestrian system inside of this, and add the kind of neighborhood pocket parks in order to make sure that this is a very cohesive pedestrian feel to our development. And all of that is up for discussion at the kind of area master plan when, you know, process and also then with subdivision plans and development plans. We just wanted to get you all... We just wanted to get you all something very quick to make sure that you all knew that we could comply with the staff's condition that we don't have objections with. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Can we get him to talk to Nathan Billings about how to...
Speed up.
Nathan just wants to make more money.
That's not possible.
So I understand what you're saying, why you want to know these certain things is so when you do the plan, you'll know where you're going, where your minimums are.
Sure.
Okay, that makes sense.
And that's why we have absolutely no problems with waiting on the apartments and on the commercial sites, because that's much more of a kind of intensive development plan review as opposed to just kind of what is our general layout for lots.
Elise, if you could put one of the maps up there, either one of them. You know, when I looked at that Tuesday, my eyes just kind of bugged out, and I think, Jessica, it's the same thing. We both mentioned the number of individual lots in there. It just looks like they are crammed in there. And I asked Elise to do a little research for me, and you're talking about 6,000 square feet per lot, and I realize they won't all be that size. And like you said, most of them won't go down that small, but that's still, it's South Crossing, the average size is 7,800, McClellan Landing?
View.
McClellan.
View.
No, not McClellan View, the one off of Paints Depot.
That's Springs, son.
Huh?
Springs.
Anyway, that's, that's 7,500. So that's a, a big difference between 6,000 and 7,500. I mean, this is, I'm going to tell you right now, I would not even consider approving close to that many lots in there. That needs to be reduced immensely, more manageable, that look like some of your all's other developments. The Abbey at Old Oxford, they're not crammed in here like this. So that's my...
Sure.
My guidance from, from starting here, and we can find an ending spot, starting spot, there's just way too many. And I would also like, if you could, address construction phases, because Elise talked about that tipping point when you have to get that second entrance in there. So are you starting on single-family or apartments? And that way we'll know kind of the way we're going to get that, when and where that second, and what's going to be your first entrance and what will be the second.
So the priority will be starting with single-family in order to get them online as kind of soon as possible. I believe that that would kind of entail us adding the McClellan Circle entrance because of the condition of approval that does specify that the kind of road construction, all of that heavy equipment has to come off there. It cannot come off the neighborhood road. And so we would have to basically be making that a priority as well.
Okay. As opposed to Paints Depot?
Yes. We do think that the commercial will be kind of slightly behind as it just tends to be that retail follows rooftops as opposed to kind of the other way around. So once they kind of get a critical mass, that's when you really start to see the commercial developers kind of, kind of circling, just like we saw with Emerson earlier today.
All right. Yes, sir.
So my name is Keith Mavash.
Come right on up here and state your name.
My name is Keith Mavash. We're actually neighbors. We own Lavender and Bloom. So we actually share the driveway coming off McClellan Circle. I just wanted to make sure that with this development, that we still have, our customers would still have easy access going in and out to our property also. And I kind of had a second question is, what were they thinking of? Because it's currently a gravel road. Are they going to, we share a gravel entrance, but guess would it be repaved then into a...
It would be a formal road.
Okay. And do we still have assurances that our customers can go in and out and...
We're not allowed to lock you out.
So you have an easement.
You have an easement.
Yeah.
You do have an easement.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Just, just as a matter of fact, I don't, I don't know. Was that, was your all's property part of Gaines Farm at one time?
It was at one time, yes.
Okay.
And how many acres is that?
15.
Thank you.
What are you doing over there?
Yes, sir, come right on up.
So I was prepared, but I'll try to stay on track that way for you. Kyle Rothfuss, I live at 4534 Ironworks Road, so not next door, but a local...
Down the road.
Down the road, a little bit. So my name is Kyle Rothfuss. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed zoning change that would reclassify agricultural land with prime farmland soils, so specifically UBL MB for residential and commercial use. The Georgetown-Scott County Comprehensive Plan clearly states that prime farmland must be protected and preserved from sprawl and development. This proposed zoning change directly contradicts that directive. Additionally, the Scott County Zoning Ordinance prohibits development in areas where prime soils or soils of statewide importance are prevalent, which includes the UBL MB soil classification on this land. Allowing this rezoning would not only violate our county's own planning policies, but also set a dangerous precedent, putting our agricultural heritage and food security at risk. The recent agreed judgment in Scott Circuit Court, case number 24CL00855, confirms that zoning changes which conflict with the comprehensive plan will not hold up under legal scrutiny. The court voided ordinances because they failed to comply with these same protections. I urge this commission to follow our existing policies and uphold the comprehensive plan. Once prime farmland is developed, it is gone forever. Please prioritize the long-term interests of our community by rejecting this rezoning request. Thank you.
Sir, will you sit down?
Yes, sir! Sir!
What was the case in Circuit Court?
That was the RV part, so I...
The one we just...
But the case is actually case number 24CL00855.
Thank you.
Can you all speak to the comprehensive plan relative to the future zoning?
Yes, so the... To clarify, the reason that staff has recommended approval of this particular application is the Gaines property, as we see it today, is within the urban service boundary of the city of Georgetown. In an effort to avoid sprawl, we are directed to concentrate growth within that urban service boundary. The property does, I'm not going to argue the facts about its prime soils, but within the urban service boundary, we believe highest and best use would be as the future land use map reflects, mixed-use and residential.
Which is what the future land use...
That is what the future land use map for that particular property states.
Can I also point out, though, that the future land shows low-density residential and then proposing medium-density residential for that area? That's also yet another contradiction.
I'll speak to that as well. So as discussed, as a part of the PUD, the idea would be that the density would be spread throughout the development. The overall density of the total residential development is 2.2 dwelling units per acre, which would meet our definition of low-density. But I, again, as a concept and as a zone change application as a part of a PUD, many of these specific issues will be sorted out at that PDP stage. And I've just, I will say, I 100% appreciate the public's input on this. It's, it's very clear that that is a very important farm to the community, and that has been expressed to the applicants even at the planning workshop earlier this week, and the importance of making sure that the development here really does reflect the heritage and the character of Georgetown. And so I will, I will leave it there for additional public comment.
We have, any other comments from the commission, questions from the commission?
I do think the, I'm sorry, lot size changes concerning, that's significant, especially as we talk about the, to Hayden's point, importance of the farm and the sort of in line with the heritage, so.
That's my big concern, is the lot, the lot size.
Yeah.
Big difference.
I'd like to agree with Mr. Price that I got this Friday, and this is a monster. And it's been a busy week. We've had a lot of snow and pushed a lot of driveways and helped a lot of neighbors and put a lot of hay. That's a lot to look at in a short amount of time.
I thought he was talking about the text amendments at the end.
Yes, that's what he was talking about.
No, what I'm talking about is putting this off another month because I've only had a few days to look at it, and it's so big.
And also getting the more public people...
Yeah. It's, it's a big deal.
I think we have a lot of people who don't even know this is even happening.
It's a lot of units. It's a lot of...
Yes, sir.
I'm Jim Vok. I live at 131 Ferguson Lane in McClellan View. You're destroying our neighborhood. You already approved the Frankfurt Pike Marketplace, so to speak, whatever that means. I know, my understanding is it's going to be a Publix grocery store and then other small businesses. Now you're proposing, or they are proposing, to put homes right behind us on postage-stamped sized lots. Our property values are going to be greatly decreased by all of this. And maybe you don't care about that, I don't know, but I would like for you to consider it. Please.
Well, I appreciate you commenting. I really feel like there's just a lot of people in Georgetown that don't know this is happening.
Yeah, we're being, our neighborhood's being slammed, and if this takes place, I'm leaving this county. I will, I will go elsewhere. So, and I'll do it soon before my property values drop dramatically. So I, I just ask you to take into consideration what you're doing to our nice little community.
Could, could they put a gate up in their community?
I think that's a good question.
Especially the construction.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
I said, could you all put a gate up?
I'm sorry?
Could you all put a gate up?
You're already using our only entrance to our neighborhood for the back entrance to the goddamn marketplace.
Watch your language.
I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm really concerned about...
I wasn't making light of your plight, it was just the, the traffic flowed through through the other, it was a big deal.
Everything you're doing around the bypass takes away the entire concept of a bypass. You're putting stoplights up everywhere, you're putting U-turn things around everywhere. The bypass is useless now.
Because the staff has made a recommendation, we can take a motion to do whatever we want to, to approve it, to disapprove it, to delay it, so.
I would love to have a little more time, because it's a, it's a big deal.
You have that right to...
We have to do that after the meeting, after the public hearing's closed, all right? I will soon.
I would probably suggest we do that, but, well, for that matter, you could actually adjourn the public hearing until next month, just continue that on.
I would like to see less...
There may be more, you know, people who want to comment anyway.
Yeah.
I would like to see less density. I would like to see less units. It's, it's a lot of units for that area.
I would agree. I'd like to see it closer to the 7,500. I understand that right now this is a concept plan, but I think it would probably go down a lot easier if we could see that.
We've got more than that. We've got quarter-acre lots.
I understand, but there's also a balance, too, to what's market...
Y'all are letting Scott County grow too damn fast.
Yes, sir! Lots, sir!
And I will say this, what the public doesn't understand, and I didn't understand until I got up here. I would love to say we have the power to do what we want to do, and...
They got more money than you do.
No, no, no.
It's not that at all. It's by law, we are bound to meet a checklist. That way, you have the same rights as the next person, as the next person. It keeps it as level playing field as possible. And we can't just arbitrarily say, no, even when I look at your lot size, I go, yeah, I'd love to match all that up.
I think that's a great point.
But they bound us so much.
It is ordinances that we are bound by law to comply with. If a development meets the ordinances, then we are bound by law to approve it. I guarantee you, in McClellan Springs or...
And you're just going to give away all agricultural land?
Please don't interrupt me. Part of, the first question is, does it align with the, with the comprehensive plan? In this case, it does align with the future land use of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan also designates a lot of land for agricultural use ongoing. This just happens to be in the urban service boundary, and it's not designated for that future land use. Again, looking at what that urban service boundary is. I guarantee you, when the development that you're sitting in now, it used to be a farm, right? Everybody sitting in here is on a piece of property somewhere that used to be a farm.
Or still is.
There were people here arguing about that, I guarantee it, but we applied the same ordinances to that development and approved it as we're applying to this. It's not based off our opinion, it is based off of what the zoning ordinances are. So if you want to change that, go and change the zoning ordinances. But again, as we're sitting here today, by law, we're required to apply the ordinances fairly to every single person and every single development that comes in here.
But you can't, you can't adjust the timing of that, though, how you do it.
The ordinance that says prime soil should be protected and not rezoned, that's an ordinance that has also been held up.
It doesn't say that in the urban services boundary. What you're referring to is the A1R zone, which is what was involved in the recreational vehicle park.
This is currently A1, isn't it A1 currently?
It's A1, but what you're talking about, that, that agreed order and all that was for A1R because it had to do with a recreational vehicle park, doesn't have to do with...
I was a parlay lawyer, I found something interesting. I'm not an attorney, obviously. I just, for me, the prime, the prime farmland, we have soil that's eroding, we have, we have a lot of, I want to protect that, so that's really where it comes from. Thank you.
So if you go to the 7,500 square foot, what percentage of the lots were that reduced? How many total lots were that big?
Well, it's 6,000 square-foot lots, and Elise said we have a maximum of 671 lots. So if you take that to 7,800, that reduces those number of houses to 516.
From what was the first...
Seven, 671.
But that's not, you're not, every lot's not going to be that small.
Yeah, they're not going to be that small. We, we recognize that.
But if we don't agree to that, we don't, that would more...
But we can reduce it by more than 100.
I see what you're saying.
And also, every time, we are bringing in a section in order to look at the individual lots, like that goes to another vote that needs to be approved in order to make sure that we are standing by what we are saying, that we're not trying to cram as many units in there as possible. We are actually trying to make sure that we are responsibly using the land that we have. When you have an urban service boundary, you are basically, it is your duty to try to utilize that land so you don't have to expand it again, because you are trying to preserve the farm. And so what we were trying to do here is to have a simple concept plan that would show the basic development patterns, knowing full well that we have to come back again and again and again in order to keep making sure that we are aligned with the community's goals. And that's exactly what we are trying to do. And also with regards to McClellan's view that Ball Homes developed, it, we are planning to have the larger lots for this development towards that side in order to basically maintain that pattern that we already established when we developed that property. Thank you.
If you find larger lots, give me a ballpark. Will we come back through and do that plan? Absolutely, yeah.
Well, and to the planning staff's credit, they're actually going to be having, which the public hasn't seen this yet, they're going to be having more public news if people can't come and meet with the staff. But at the same time, it's already been said here, there are so many people who are not aware of what's happening here. I just think that it's not going to hurt it to delay it and give the public more time to get the word out, everybody get the word out. And the public does need to be heard, there's a lot of other people we need to hear from. I mean, it does not hurt to hear from the public.
I would like to make a motion to continue the hearing.
Let me get to close the hearing.
To continue the hearing.
Continue the hearing, yeah.
So do I close it first, or?
No.
Okay. So... Hold on, we're right in the middle of a, of a motion here.
So I make a motion to continue the hearing until next, until February, next February.
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
Can we, can, can that be put in there about the lot size, or does that come later?
Well, that'll come later, and this is just continuing. Why, we don't have to say why, we're just continuing. So this is... I would actually put in there why you're continuing. More information, more public dissemination.
More time to disseminate the information myself.
And more time to study.
Yeah.
And that's why we pay Mr. Perkins those big bucks. Yeah, that's it. I can't wait to get it. All right, I have a, a motion to continue. So now I do have to close the public hearing, and...
All right. I have a, a motion to continue. So now I do have to close the public hearing and will now take a vote to continue the public hearing. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
I suppose so. Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Singer?
I suppose so.
And the chair votes yes too.
But I still think you, you don't close the public hearing because we're, we're continuing it next month.
Yeah, we don't want to close it till.
Yes, we're not closing it.
Okay. So do I need to open it back up?
No, you just need to, you just need to say ignore what I just said.
Ignore what I just said.
I like my life. Ignore what I just said.
Okay. All right. Then the next item on the agenda is the zoning court code text amendment.
Sorry.
And that too is a public hearing.
In the back, that's the red text.
Yeah, yeah. Do I open the public hearing?
No, we're just never, we're never closing.
We're never closing.
Are we gonna?
And Monday or Tuesday at our workshop, we discussed postponing this also because of various reasons for the public to read it more and the staff. Mr. Fleming?
If I may, before the commission makes a determination on this item, I would just like to state for the commission's benefit that we were able to share this via our social media page. Follow us on Facebook. And with that, it was liked by two people and shared by two people. And one of those two groups that it was shared to was to the Friends of Great Crossing. So the, the word is getting out there. Obviously, if I can take a quick poll of the audience, is anyone here to speak specific to these regulation proposals?
I am not a female. I'm here to learn.
Wonderful opportunity. So if I, if you may, I would, I would like to speak generally about what the recommendations are at this time.
Yes, sir. Please.
So, as we've had discussed several times tonight, we are bound to review applications that come before us by our zoning ordinances. As a part of that, we do recognize that over time, the needs of the community does change. The zoning ordinance needs to change along that way as well. The, the primary reason for a zoning ordinance change like this is if something in the comprehensive plan has changed. Our comprehensive plan has changed. And so staff has briefed this commission several times in the past about what some of our intent is. And so I'm going to quickly kind of go over what the intent of this zoning ordinance change would be. The first and foremost, foremost is to align our development regulations with our comprehensive plan. Along those lines, what we've done is we've identified several sections that are in need of modification. The first are our definition sections. We can understand that especially with, with what we're doing here, words really do matter. The definitions are incredibly important. And so our proposed zoning ordinance change does two things. Number one, it takes out definitions found in a subsection of our small cell wireless section incorporates them into the, the primary definition section. Somebody's looking for a definition, the last thing you want to do is say, well, you read the definition section. You just didn't read the right definition section. So we've brought all of those other. The other thing we do is we just recently had a new special use come through, medicinal cannabis. So we're incorporating the definitions from that new section into the definitions as well. Following that, we've made minor modifications to both our R2 and R3 zone. The primary purpose between modify, primary purpose for modifying our R2, R3 zones was number one, to begin looking at how we can begin incorporating mixed use development into our communities where they could fit. The way we've chosen to do that is by modifying the standards for planned unit developments inside of those sections to allow for limited commercial intertwining. Mixed use is really what we're talking about. You know, in some of our other sections, or actually I'll say in our future land use map, we have identified areas where mixed use would be the preferred future land use. How do we get to that? We've taken the most direct approach with that. While again, understanding that we don't want to make that by right. And so by doing a planned unit development, that gives us flexibility. And this commission in particular, the ability to review those uses. Another big thing that we've done is we've changed the way we calculate density for these types of residential developments from net acres to gross acres. The primary reason for that is just out of simplicity. If somebody comes to us and says, hey, I have 10 acres. How many units can I get? The easiest thing to do is just say on the gross, you get 4.4 dwelling units per acre or 12 dwelling units per acre or 16 dwelling units per acre. Last thing we want to do is say, well, we have to figure out how big your roads are going to be first. We have to figure out what easements we're going to put through there. And so by going to gross, it makes it a more, a more predictable document for the, the community and a little bit easier for staff to interpret as well. The other thing we've done, it came forward again tonight. It's come forward, I think, two other times in very similar circumstances to how it came up tonight. Our R3 zone is our high density zone. The high density zone works best when they get as many units into it as they can. And so every high density development that I've seen come through in about three months, which has been three, they've requested a variance to go from two stories to three stories. And so if everybody's asking for the same variance every time, that's a pretty good indicator that market conditions have changed, community need has changed. And so allowing three stories by right, I think, is the most efficient way to number one, again, make consistency across developments. But number two, cut down on, you know, the, all the amount of staff time to just process that additional variance. With that said, what that also does is that will in effect allow them to come close to a property line without having to terrace or have additional setbacks. If we can go up, hopefully that'll prevent us from having to go out. We are not changing the zoning density maximum at this time. It was 16 before. It'll be 16 after, recognizing again that we are calculating on gross instead of net now. After that, we took a look at our, two of our commercial zones, our B1 zone, which is our neighborhood commercial. Where me and Mr. Shirley were discussing this. If you close your eyes and think what neighborhood commercial is, every one of you guys is going to have a different picture in your head of what that could be. And our purpose section inside of that zone left a lot to interpretation. What we've tried to do is put in just the absolute lowest level of, of kind of additional restriction on that. Specifically, we said if you're going to have a commercial enterprise inside of our B1 zone, it needs to be less than 8,000 square feet in total square footage. And then also you can't operate more than 18 hours a day. No, no 24/7 whatevers. I think I said oxygen bar when we were talking about it.
Oxygen bars.
After that, we have also modified our B4 zone. And that is the one where I'm going to make sure that I do get this correct. The B4 was primarily modified to allow for planned unit developments to begin incorporating residential development inside of that. And in particular, what we want is for the B4 again, as this idea of a mixed use zone, to limit the residential development to the first floor. Or rather everywhere but the first floor. I think that's actually what I wrote down in here. If you've been to Lexington, if you've been to a lot of major cities, this idea of a four over one or because, you know, we're looking at here, maybe a three over one, something like that. Where you establish commercial on the first floor and you allow for that residential use above that, a true mixed use. The way that we can get to that is through, again, through a PUD that would allow for additional review. So that's the quick overview. The packet does contain a red line version of the text that indicates what's new, what's being removed, what's being added. I'm going to go ahead and jump ahead. If we missed an area that, that was maybe impacted by this, that was not intentional, at all times, our entire code is available and accessible by the public either in our office or online.
I do have a question about the height.
Yes.
Because years ago, they used to say in Georgetown, because of the fire department, we're limited by how high, because of the equipment, how tall it can go. Does that take all that in consideration? I mean, I'm assuming that local fire department, they can.
Yeah. Mr. Shirley, if you'll check on the, in the very back of the pack, the last page is our area and dimensions chart. Within that, that does indicate that we are increasing our, our three zone up to 50 feet or three stories. If you look to the B4 zone as a previously allowed height, what does that say, Mr. Shirley?
Six or 75, six, four, seven.
Already we allow for development up to 75 feet. So we are not increasing the highest heights that you could expect.
So our local fire department has equipment. That's all I'm asking, that they, we have the equipment to, because I'm not always a question to get that high. And then the second thing is, I thought at one time there was talk about four story buildings in Georgetown. So it's, that's not going to be, it's three stories. Is that right?
So within the, within the R3 zone, that would be three stories.
Commercial, that can go.
If you were to go to commercial, again, in the B4 zone, that goes up to, did you say 75 feet?
75 feet. Okay, thank you.
Which would allow for that stacking. If there are no other questions, I would love, again, to, to really clarify something, which is that nothing that we're talking about tonight is written stone. Planning is iterative and incremental. And that as we, if we were to look back on the first zoning ordinance that Georgetown ever adopted, it would look very different from what we've reviewed tonight. And so I would welcome the public's input as we try to craft a code that does reflect on the values and needs of the community as it stands today. With that said, I would like, again, to ask any questions or open it up to anybody else and then allow the board to make a decision whether to continue or not.
I do love what you just said because I've heard it several times and it's, well, 20 years ago, we did this. Well, 20 years, I, I, I don't hardly care because that was 20 years ago. And what are we doing now and what are we going to do in the next 10? And I do like that forward thinking of let's not get tied up in that. It's working now and what is best for us now. Because we are an entirely different community now than we were five years ago, alone 20 years ago. So I appreciate your thinking on that.
There's quite a few public people. We've had more people at meetings though. So how do you all best hear about what's going on in the community for these type of issues?
We got a letter.
You got a letter?
A adjacent property problem.
Okay. Yeah. How, how?
Paper.
How do I care about it? I drive down the road and I see the zoning signs and I pull over and take a picture.
Do you all have any suggestions on how we can get the public more engaged?
How do you get the packets? I mean, we got a letter that said there was a meeting. Or online somewhere, website, whatever. Because we're sitting here taking pictures of all these maps and all this stuff. And I've never got to see it.
So the, the packet is made available online. If that's not included in your, in your letter, I think that's definitely one just internal administrative thing we can change. We can include language that directs you to the website. The other thing is if, you know, if you can ever come into the office, all of our files are always available for review by the public. You know, some organizations will make you do like a freedom of information request or something like that. We're not that way. We'll get you copies of anything that you want to take a look at.
I will say, I've been here two years now and I have nothing but great experiences working with it. So it's not been, we had a conditional use permit that we had bring forward for our farms. So like, there's been a great process. I completely support the mixed use mindset. I've lived in New York City, Chicago. I've lived in farmland, Pennsylvania. I've lived all over the country. Mixed use is a great way to go. As far as where we consume information, typically I'm on Facebook a lot, but I think for this kind of information, I tend to look for my email. So if there's a news, if I'm missing where to subscribe or something like that, where I could have pushed those, like those documents, like I just read, I went onto the Facebook page and found them and I will make sure I follow now. But, you know, I saw the actual language, so I probably could have left before everything in here I'm good with. I would have been a thumbs up on Facebook, but. Email subscription where those packets could be sent. I, I get a lot of email, but I also know if it's important to me, I will definitely look at it.
But, but there, there is an acknowledgement that we need to engage the public more and that this gentleman, our new director's credit, he has worked immediately. How long have you been here now?
Uh, three months.
So he's already going to set up a whole community, not just, I mean, so, you know, I think that's a good thing, but you know, let him know how, we're trying to learn how to get the public more engaged. So this gentleman here.
Thank you.
Brian Hayes. I'll be real quick. Brian Hayes, resident in northern part of Scott County off Sadieville exit. I am a consulting engineer. So maybe in a different capacity, you may see me down here. For various reasons, I try not to practice too much in Scott County just because my clients outside of the area pay better. Anyway, as far as the packet, I just, I just went to the, the website for Georgetown Scott County Planning Commission and, and downloaded the packet. It was, it was readily available for, for what I saw tonight. So for me, being slightly familiar with the website, I didn't have a problem accessing it, but I had some familiarity with the process here. As far as the multi-use with R3 and things like that, Charlie, this, this, this does go back 20, 25 years with Steve Austin. Steve Austin was a huge proponent of pushing the mixed use where you had, say, for example, a commercial on the first floor, resident, resident above that. So that if that resident wanted to own that commercial business and to live above it, then maybe he doesn't need a car or something like that. And he can get to where he wants to work and so forth. But so it's, it's, it is, it is probably appropriate to bring it up again at this time to make that allowable. Because I think the conditions with more pedestrian friendly, more, you know, bicycle amenities, that something like this will just work this time around.
Try to keep our traffic off the roadways and then we're in their community.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, look at the finances of somebody owning a building, which is their business on the first floor and their residence on the second or third floor. They may have ability to combine their expenses into one and that may work for them financially. And then of course, that's a plus for the community. So I'm done though.
Stuff we wouldn't get otherwise.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your input. I say we need to move this other business to the front of the meeting because it's empty. We should have done this first. We can do that.
And it's also coming by on time. So you can start that stuff.
That's right.
All right. Have anything else?
I guess this would, these changes would apply to any new development coming at.
At time of adoption.
Okay.
So as soon as it's adopted, we become active.
Nothing retroactive unless someone came in.
Don't worry about it.
Don't worry about it.
Before, before that gap will come down, either a recommendation of a, or maybe a recommendation approved, because everyone likes it.
I don't think everybody's seen it. So I will take a recommendation to postpone. I'll make the recommendation.
You mean motion?
Motion.
Motion, motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, Mr. Price?
Yes, sir.
We were right in the middle of a motion there.
Sorry?
We were right in the middle of a motion.
Right, right. And I, I, what I've got to say is I, I commend you for your vote on, on that motion. And I, I went through this so-called packet and I don't see, as I said earlier, I don't see the, the previous text available for you or for the public to review in comparison to the revision.
Like Mr.
So you can't, the revision doesn't mean very much unless you have the old text with which to compare it.
And that's available online or stop by the office and get a copy of it?
But I'm saying you should put it in the packet. It should be in the packet that, that's, that's public sees online. If you have to use electricity. I would rather not use electricity. I'd rather have it in paper. And but the, the original text is not there. What you look at, you don't see the, the original text as you, and to compare with the red text, the new revised text.
And we'll discuss that, Charlie, because I, I agree with Steve.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll discuss that and get that's proper.
But we, we have the original text. You're right. But, but you don't have.
You have the, you, you, is your packet different from, this is your packet.
No, 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 not my packet. My folder, when I first came on board, is, I have the original.
Text. You've got the text. You've got the original.
From having the zoning ordinances to start with.
It's going to be fixed.
It's going to be fixed?
So you can see it. Yes, everybody can see it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
And you're absolutely right.
We're very good, Amber Jones.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Yes, sir. So moved.